Where's that? Where do I go back?
Yes, sir.
What was cheese?
Ready to go? I call this board, the board of supervisors meeting to order will begin with pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Do we have an adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Whoa, got an adjustment here.
Yeah, a few, a few adjustments. Can we add three items and they're just really more discussion items? One item is already on the agenda under unfinished business. It's a burn building update. And then the two other items would be, one, there's an email that the board received, some correspondence from Mr. and Mrs. Tally for, for a brief discussion. And then Mr. Payne has an update on the property that the county's working on acquiring down in Fork Union.
With those adjustments soon. Do I have a second? A motion made by Mr. O'Brien, signed by Mr. Weaver. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. We'll now go with county administration report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have a few things to report this evening. So let's see, where, what I want to move where here. So, um, the Free Enterprise Forum, they do some, uh, some reporting periodically on, uh, just lots of different things. But they've, uh, and I've shown you this before previously through January through April. When they've compiled sales tax, sales and use tax data for the, for the Virginia Department of Taxation. What this compares, this compares January through June of 2019 compared January through June of 2020. And you can see here in that same period of time, Charlottesville, Charlottesville saw 11 and a half percent decrease in their sales and use tax, while all these other localities saw an increase in their sales and use tax. Alamo County, 1% increase, Augusta, 11%. If you see Fluvana County, we had a little over 18 and a half percent increase in that same six month period this year versus, uh, the previous, uh, previous fiscal year. And last time I, last time I presented this to the board back in June, it was for January through April. And at, at that point, we were showing 17%. So our sales tax was kind of creeping up. You know, certainly this has something to do with some of the online sales tax and, uh, being reported to the state now. But it most certainly has something to do with, with our county residents being more, um, located and staying in our community and shopping more in our community. So just a quick update on sales tax data. Another thing, so let's discuss Fluvana COVID cases really quick here. Today, there was a big uptick in COVID cases. And I'm sure you may have seen this in some of the local news that's reported this. Um, we've had a increase in 41 cases in the last 24 hours. We were at 247 cases yesterday. We're at 288 cases today. And the spike was strictly from, uh, the Fluvana Correctional Center for Women. They've had some cases and they've had a little bit of an outbreak. Um, so just, just kind of in, uh, kind of looking at the numbers. So currently in the correctional center, they have 1,333 offenders. And, uh, the correctional center also has about 450 employees. All the offenders and employees in the, uh, in the correctional center, center have been tested and they will, will be continued to be tested. Uh, as I said, there, there's a 41, uh, 41 case increase in the last 24 hours. And I'm sure we're going to see some increases from there. I don't have a solid number, but I know, uh, Thomas Jefferson Health, this, uh, was going to give us some, some, a little heads up on, on, and any increases or anything like that. But again, they're kind of ahead of it. They're making sure they, they had all the cases and had all the, uh, testing equipment available to make sure everyone was tested and will continue to be tested. Um, and I think one of the, uh, I think from what I understand, it's from one particular, one particular, uh, block. So if they can get that contained, then hopefully that doesn't, um, you know, spread, spread further. As we talked about last board meeting, so again, this is, um, uh, national preparedness month. So week three, which is September 13th through 19th is, is, is prepare for disasters. Limit the impact that disasters have on you and your family. And then week four, again, for national preparedness month is teach youth about preparedness. To find out more about that, um, you can go to www.reddy.gov to find more information on what you need to do to kind of, for you and your family to be ready for whether, any type of disaster it is, whether it's weather related, um, you know, you know, lightning storms, uh, whatever it may be. One additional update, so the board approved for the Parksmerec, uh, to do the recreation youth outdoor gym program. Mr. Spitzer has had some requests from families, kind of, you know, they've, they've been doing this for about two weeks now. And some families have been saying, hey, you know, we're doing more classes in the morning. Is there a way that you can maybe make the programs, you know, for my first grader, he can't attend first thing in the morning. Is there maybe a way to make the programs more available in the afternoon? So after kind of going through things and just with the participation at this point, he was able to kind of shift the program around. So starting next Monday, um, to kind of, you know, address some of the parents' needs, they're going to be kind of doing combination days. So on Mondays, it'd be first and second graders that would kind of work together. Again, still limiting participation and, and, and still separating them by, by the 25 maximum kind of groups. You know, spread out, social distance and all that stuff. Tuesdays, they would do third and fourth graders, Wednesdays, fifth and sixth graders, and then Thursday, seventh and eighth graders. So again, like I said, the board, the board gave direction to kind of move forward with this, but you know, just with some of the outreach from families, Mr. Spitzer just wanted to make sure that there was a program that was better suited to the family schedules and what they're doing in schools.
What's the participation rate?
Uh, Mr. Spitzer, participation rate?
We had nine yesterday, yesterday and today, and next week we'll have about 15 to 16 as these signed up right now. Three today, I think. So it's getting better as, as people are hearing a little bit more here and figuring out their, you know, their work, their school schedule, stuff like that. I know my son did today, he went out, you know, to get out there at 2:15 just because his math class lasted almost to like 10:00. So I mean, there's a little adjustments right there, but we're working them out.
So the, the, from, we have small business grants. We had, as you remember, the board provided a second round of funding for the small business grants. The application deadline was supposed to end this Friday, September 18th. We've decided to, to push it out one more week, um, to, uh, next Friday, September 25th, to just try and address, you know, making sure that we can get everyone in that, that has the availability to get in and make sure that everyone's, um, you know, getting the funding that they need, uh, that's been disrupted from COVID. So again, extending the application period from Friday, September 18th to Friday, September 25th. Some discussion was had by the board before about, you know, what other things besides C-Vac is going on in the county. We've had a little difficulty, you know, kind of figuring out who our government liaison is because people change. Well, we finally got ahold of someone today and this, me and Mr. Rothmel had a meeting this morning with CenturyLink and, uh, and Lumen regarding some connectivity upgrades they plan on doing in the southern and eastern part of the county. So CenturyLink with their new name, Lumen, is working on construction of Connect America areas. And, and those are areas that are eligible if they have less than four megabits per second download. Just as a, as a, you know, kind of example, an HD movie typically needs about four megas, megabits per second download speed as an example. What they're going to be doing, they are actually going to be working on some areas. They have some areas under construction that will get them at least 10 megabits per second, with the possibility up to 40 megabits per second now. The one thing to remember is this is not fiber going to the home. What they're going to be doing, they're going to be, they're going to be increasing and upgrading their fiber, uh, to nodes. And then the same DSL will then be utilized to, to provide the connectivity in the homes. In fact, maybe seven homes in Fluvana County. And they're looking at having that done by June 20, uh, June 2021. And the next page, I'll kind of show you a map of, of some areas that they're looking at. So the map on the left here is just kind of showing the map of Fluvana County. Map on the right here is some areas that they are, um, that they are looking at doing. You can see there's some areas in Kent Store on the eastern part of the county, kind of down towards the Columbia area. And then some areas down in, in the southern part of the county around Brimmo, Brimmo Bluff, West Bottom Road. Again, this is not fiber to the homes. It's just upgrading the fiber to, um, to the nodes to provide a little bit better connectivity to some of their customers.
I believe, well, I drove through Shores and Mountain Hill the other day. That, that must be the other circle of the churches.
Probably, yeah. So again, you know, like I said, we, we had some, we had some staff that, that were utility staff that were down in the Brimmo area that was saying that they had noticed some folks doing some work. Um, and this is, uh, Mrs. Booker brought it to our attention as well. So we, uh, we were finally able to get a, get in contact with the CenturyLink person just to see kind of what some of the upgrades that they're planning on doing. Does the board have any questions on any of that? Okay, um, from an economic development standpoint, um, so the FY20 Economic Development Office, their annual, uh, annual report is finished. That'll be mailed out to BOS members and EDA members for them to take a look at seeing what type of progress has occurred in fiscal year 20 as far as, you know, businesses coming, you know, businesses that we lost just because of, you know, one particular reason or another. Anyone on here can, uh, take a look at the link there and it's on the county's web, website. But again, a hard copy of this will be going to the board members and EDA members. Uh, spotlight on business for this, uh, month is the Scrappy Elephant. So the Scrappy Elephant opened up Saturday, September 12th. They're located, uh, right in the village, the Palmyra Village on Main Street. They probably, they previously did a pop-up shop in Village Station. Um, it's a creative reuse shop. They sell reclaimed and reused goods for makers to use. They are located actually just to the left of the Chamber Building. Yes, the old, uh, the Chamber office. So again, the Scrappy Elephant just opened up, uh, September, Saturday, September 12th. And just as always, information, uh, for the public, you know, you can get, uh, information on what's going on in Fluvana County on our website, through fan mail, through Facebook and through Twitter. And, uh, some of the board's regular meetings coming up. We have Wednesday, October 7th, it's a 4:00 PM regular meeting. October 21st, it's a 7:00 PM regular meeting. And then November 4th, at 4:00 PM, it's a regular meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions from board.
Are there any questions?
I'm wondering about the sales tax. Since it's at 18%, how does that translate into more money to the county?
Well, the sales tax is up because of benefit. Unfortunately, personal property tax is way down a whole lot more than the sales tax. So it also, um, hopefully it's better off. Like it's not covering the other.
You talk about collection rate then, I'm guessing?
Yeah, as, as an example, as, as an example, so June, 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 we're, normally we're about 150, 160,000 in sales tax. It's past June, we're at 200,000.
It was 200. So it gets significantly up based on the percentage of sales tax. But it's not covering the other dips of revenue unfortunately that we're experiencing. We'll be doing, um, at the end of the first quarter, which is in a couple of weeks, we'll be taking a look, this guy will be taking a look at the, um, revenue expenditure for what we're kind of ending up. Now, of course, that's not 100% instead of what we have lost.
Sure.
But we'll be giving you, or she will be giving you a presentation on October 7th to give you kind of an idea of where we end up with revenue. I think we're going to make revenue, but I will be surprised if we exceed it by very much. And normally we exceed it by a million or two. And I don't really believe that.
Just a million or two.
Just a million or two.
Alrighty, any other question? Thank you, Mr. Doll. Appreciate that. We'll now open up the first round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board? Will state your name, your address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Hello, board members. This is, uh, Rudy Garcia, 802 Ravanna Woods Drive, Fork Union District. I'd just like to, uh, just have a couple of comments tonight. First, I'd like to, uh, thank CIC and the Economic Development, uh, Office for arranging that extension on the grant application process. We're hopeful that that will, uh, allow some other businesses to put in for the grant. The Chamber has committed to sending that out over the next, uh, three or four days multiple times to our entire mailing list. And we're also using our social media outlets to publicize that. So hopefully we can reach some more of the businesses who have not, uh, been made aware of this yet for whatever reason. We actually had a phone call at the Chamber Office today from a well-established business in the county who had absolutely no idea that the CARES Act grant was in place. And we were dumbfounded by that. The second thing I'd like to do is announce that the Fluvana Leadership Development Program will have a class this year. The steering committee met on Monday evening. And we are in the process of putting together our curriculum for delivery via Zoom. It'll be a little bit different than it's been in the past. Uh, I don't think the, uh, chair will have to drive the bus this year because I don't think we're going to have the bus tour. Unless things change, and in that case, we will reach back out to the chair for his assistance there. And then, uh, finally, I'd just like to, uh, thank you, the board for, uh, the resolution for, uh, Dr. Myers. She's been a very pivotal part of this county for a very long time. And her peaceful passing organization has been a great place for our young cadets from Fork Union to cut their teeth on community service. And so it's, uh, very fitting and I thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Alrighty, is there anyone else?
There are three people on the meeting that I can only see their phone numbers and I can't unmute them. I can see the last three digits of their phone numbers.
Why don't you just give the last three digits of the phone numbers and hopefully they're?
So the person with, um, phone number, the last three digits, 116, if you are here to make a public comment and can unmute yourself.
That is 116, last three digits. If you want to public comment, go ahead and unmute at this time. Okay, what's the next one?
364.
364, last three digits are 364. If you'd like to speak in public comment, please unmute yourself. Okay, what's the last one?
684.
684, that's the last one. If you'd like to speak in public comment, please unmute yourself.
And then there's someone I don't recognize whose name is Aaron French. Is that someone who's in a presentation?
I'll put them on.
I'm not unmuting them.
Alrighty, seeing no others, and if you are on there, I apologize. You could definitely come back for the second round of public comment, state your comments. Well, now close first round of public comment. Alright, we will now move forward with SUP A, Tab A, SUP 20. Going D01, Central Virginia Electric Cooperative, Mr. Miles.
Just good evening, Chairman Sheridan, members of the board. A special use permit, um, for you tonight from Central Virginia Electric Cooperative. It's for their new substation that would be located in the Kent Store area on the south side of Route 6. Uh, it is a special use permit to construct an electrical substation as a major utility within the A1 zoning. The state is on the south side of Route 6 on about a four acre parcel adjacent to the existing transmission line. And this also includes, uh, within the compound, a new firefly broadband fiber pipe. This is the proposed substation, uh, layout, uh, from their applicant's surveyor engineer, um, that's located, um, adjacent to the high tension lines. And you'll see in the north part of the slide, the existing Kent Store substation. Throughout the public hearing process, uh, the neighborhood meeting, we did not have anyone have any concerns in contact of us through that public hearing process. Also last Tuesday, um, here in this room, at the planning commission, September 8th meeting, we did not have any public comments, uh, for or against this request. But the applicant and the representative and planning staff have been working on the screening conditions for, um, the area that would surround, um, the north, east and south property lines. There are some existing trees and shrubs that they would maintain. But however, the, um, other remaining area adjacent to Route 6 and, uh, adjacent to the Davis Farm, they would be planting additional evergreen, um, trees, uh, for screening. Site plan, if this special use permit is approved, will be submitted for approval. And the screening requirements would be shown on there for, for, um, staffs reviewing. So planning, uh, the planning staff and BDOT do recommend approval of this, um, request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions along with the seven conditions found in the staff report.
Alright, do we have any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Don't guess we have the applicant speak with?
Yeah.
Is applicant online?
Mr. Bruce Marhoff, C-Vac and possibly Massey Saunders.
Uh, yes, this is Bruce Marhoff, uh, Chief Operating Officer for Central Virginia Electric Co-op. So we, we are here, uh, available for, to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Marhoff?
How much of an expanded capacity is this going to bring to the area?
Uh, can you, can you repeat the question?
How much of an expanded capacity is going to bring to the area and what's the demand that's driving it right now?
Uh, for the, for the substation, the electric facilities, uh, we have a, an existing transformer that's in the substation on the north side of the road. And, uh, that transformer has, um, reached capacity. So we need to install a larger transformer. Uh, the other aspect that's driving the new substation is that Dominion is changing the voltage on their transmission line from 115,000 volts to 230,000 volts. And when they do that, we have to, uh, practically rebuild our substation to, to be able to have the insulation level to accept that voltage. And, um, the spacing, uh, requirements for the conductors and the, the structures, um, re- require, um, a, a larger area. So, um, those are the two main factors that are driving the need for a new substation. The, uh, capacity, we will, when we do the, uh, new substation, we will likely at least double the capacity of the existing substation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Booker, Ms. Eager, do y'all have a question?
No.
Alrighty, Mr. Weaver. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Marhoff. We do appreciate that. Alright, hearing no other questions from? You're welcome. Hearing no other questions from the board, we will now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Ms. Harris, do you think we have anyone? Or should I read those three numbers again?
So, just the 116 numbers, Mr. Marhoff. The other two numbers, 364 and 684.
Alright, uh, number 364, if you're here for the public hearing, please unmute yourself. And you said 684? And the last one is 68, what? And number 684, if you're here for the public hearing, please unmute yourself. Nope. Alrighty, hearing noted. We'll now, uh, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move that the board of supervisors approve SUP 20 D01, a request to construct a major utility electrical substation on map 39, Section A, parcel 34A, subject to the seven conditions listed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made. Made by O'Brien, signed by Ms. Eager. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker? Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Weaver? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. We'll now move forward with B, supplemental appropriation of FY21 CARES Act funding, Ms. Twisday.
Good evening. This is background of funding for the CARES Act. As you know, this was signed, um, by President. We have received one allocation of 2,372,002 dollars several months ago. We have now received the second allocation. This is great. The bad news is that we didn't have a meeting today with BGFOA, GFOWA, the MLL, a lot of agencies that have been working really hard on this. And it does not appear they're going to extend the deadline past December 30th. So these funds will have to be expended by December 30th or returned to the state.
And, and, and remember from the board's standpoint, um, this is strictly administrative because we got more than, greater than 1% of what our budget was. We have to do a public hearing. We got first round, we got the second round of funding. We have over, you know, close to 4.8 million dollars. And we are, we are working to utilize those funds in, in, to the benefit of Fluvana County. But there, there may be some leftover ones also.
Alrighty, are there any questions or comments from the board?
You know, I think it's certainly helping out counties throughout the area and, um, makes a difference. So I'm glad the state's steering this. That's all I can say. It's, it's a benefit to, to our citizens and I think trying to protect them and the messages that we've been getting out. I'm glad that the state is behind this program.
Federal money that was given to the states.
It's money that was, it was money from the federal government that was passed to the state. And the state had some discretion on if they would release it all to the localities or not. Like I said, they released the first round of funding and then it was decided to then release kind of the, the matching second round that, that we received.
Alrighty, um, any other questions? Alrighty, any other questions? Alrighty, hearing none. I will now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments on topic for five minutes and direct it to the board. Is anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Only phone number 364.
Phone number ending in 364, if you would like to speak at this public hearing, please unmute your phone. Alrighty, hearing none. Supervisors, are there any other questions? Or comments? Alrighty, do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the supplemental appropriation of 2,379,202 dollars for the CARES Act funding to the FY21 CARES budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Eager and seconded by? Yes ma'am, I got you. Motion seconded by Ms. Booker. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Weaver? Mr. O'Brien? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. We'll now move forward with C, ordinance amendment to reduce the penalty for late payment of taxes on tangible personal property, Mr. Dahl.
So I'll handle this one. So board members, if you remember back during budget time, back in May, we were discussing as we were kind of entering COVID, you know, what could we do to help the citizens out? And it was also discussed at that point that the county has, if you are over 30 days delinquent on your tangible personal property taxes, your penalty went from 10% up to 25%. And the board determined at that point, they would like to try and reduce that for what is in line with other localities around our area. We could not do it in time for the June 5th collection. So the board requested staff to come back and Mr. Payne to come back with an amendment to reduce that. We've done that, we've done the advertising for that. And what this does, this addresses that. And so let me kind of go back through here. So again, the previous late fee penalty for outstanding personal property taxes greater than 30 days was 25%. What this amendment would do, it'd allow taxpayers failing to pay tangible personal property taxes on June 5th or December 5th as applicable, shall incur a penalty of 10% or $10, whichever is greater. And that's kind of standard right now as it is for real estate and tangible personal property. So as you see right here, it still says the same thing, you know, anyone failing to pay June 5th or December 5th. There's still the 10% tax on past due personal property taxes or the $10. All we're doing is we're basically eliminating anything that's over 30 days, you get increased up to the 25%. So that's, that's basically what this amendment does. Now, there's been some discussion from the commissioner and the treasurer's standpoint on when this becomes effective. And I'll kind of get to that once we get to the motions. So there's two motions. One motion is, do you want to make it effective basically immediately, once we approve it today? It then becomes effective for the December 5th collection, which I think was the intent of the board when they, when they wanted to make this change. There was some discussion with the commissioner that, you know, for, you know, kind of keeping everything within the same calendar year, the same, to start it January 1st. Now, he said as well that, you know, their office could accommodate, and the treasurer too, they could accommodate starting it, you know, as effective immediately as today. But that's just really up for the board's discretion. So again, that's, again, that's the ordinance amendment. Anyone that is, you know, past the June 5th or December 5th, they shall incur a 10% penalty. But the 25% now goes away for anything greater than 30 days. So that's, that's, that's the amendment to the ordinance of Section 20-1-2.1.
In terms of the June 5th that is passed, if there's a penalty now being passed 30 days, that would still be assessed at 25% or would we retroactively?
It would, because it's, yes. And I have the commissioner, I think the commissioner and the treasurer may be on?
We're really saying December 30th, 2020, and June 5th, 2021 would be impacted by this?
Yes, yeah, you know, like I said, the treasurer will be, is going to be running tax bills for December 5th. They're going to be processing them really, really soon. And that was really actually the original intent of trying to get this on. And then after we kind of got into the process, there was some discussion of, well, should it be effective January 1st? Or do we just make it effective right now? So again, you know, I think the treasurer and commissioner can accommodate whatever. Okay, Ms. Young. Ms. Leonard, are you on?
I'm sorry, Ms. Leonard, we can't hear you, dear.
Anyway, I can say Ms. Leonard.
She needs to unmute.
Yeah. Well, anyway, she reached out to me and she said for the benefit of the citizens of Fluvana County, it would make sense to do it sooner than later.
Alrighty, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Let me understand this, 25% goes away completely, is that correct?
The additional 25%?
Correct. If you're, if you're one day late, as it stands right now, so day one through day 29 for personal property, if you're late, it's 10%. If you go over the 30 days, now you go from the 10% up to 30%. So all it does now is just the 10% is the penalty.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe that we talked about this, that that's what most of the counties around us are.
All the other, yes, a majority of all the other counties, they were all at 10%.
Majority of them are just at 10%.
What's the impact on, not that I think, we shouldn't be doing this, but what's the impact on tax, I mean, on the collection?
Yeah, we had talked about this back then, about what the impact was. And, and it's very, from a dollar standpoint, and I'm just completely off the cuff. I vaguely remember someone saying something to the effect of, you know, it may be a $5,000 impact. Now, I could be completely wrong, so don't hold me to that.
We've been very, it was minimal. Well, we've been very blessed, because we've counted our collection rates at 97% or 98%. And this year, you know, with COVID, that shot a hole in that, but.
Yeah, I mean, so anyway, those that are over the 30 days.
Eric.
Yes, so that's. Thank you. I'm sorry, we hear you.
I think gentlemen, if you go back to what you initially had said about wanting this to be for December to help the taxpayers with COVID, I think we need to stick to that. It's not going to be a real problem, it's just the commissioner going in under their tax settings and changing the penalty date. Because I don't want to undo what you all were trying to do. I know we were trying to do it even for June to reduce that penalty. And I'm telling you, right now, I'm getting a lot of calls from people on personal property that they don't have jobs and they don't have money right now. So taking this down to 10% would really help to show that the county's out there trying to work with people.
Thank you ma'am. Alrighty, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Alrighty, I will now open up the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Oh, yes.
Hello again, board members, this is Rudy Garcia, 802 Ravenna Woods Drive, Fork Union, Virginia, in the Fork Union District. I would ask you to look favorably on this change in the ordinance. A lot of our community members are suffering right now, a lot of our businesses are suffering right now. And anything we can do to help them alleviate that, I think would be a good thing. I would also ask you to consider extending the moratorium that you had in place for 30 days to allow some of those families and businesses who were affected to have a little bit more grace period than what they currently have. Just listening to the treasurer, she has the ability to make that, those changes fairly easily. It seems to, that it would have a fairly low impact on the county's revenue stream. And if we can help one family or one business by changing a rule or allowing some grace, I think that would be a very good thing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Alrighty, seeing none, I will now end the public hearing. Are there any more questions or comments from the board?
I like Mr. Garcia's ideas, not problematic to extend the January or December 30th. Taxes by 30 days, Eric.
I was just talking to Mr. Payne, so last for the June, yeah, June 5th taxes, we ended up doing a temporary ordinance extension, did we not, Mr. Payne, for that period? So if the board wants, wants to implement that for December, staff and in conjunction with Mr. Payne's office, we could work on something to bring it before the board at a future meeting. Whether there's time to do that before the bills have to go out, I don't know. Yeah. And again, last time, that might be a question from Ms. Leonard, last time, what we ended up doing, I think, I think the bills said when they're due, but there was something that we either put in the bills or?
We stuffed in the bills.
Correct.
Paper saying we were allowing you an additional 24 days.
Correct.
Before any penalty would be assessed.
Does Ms. Leonard have a comment as to whether, time wise, we need what, four weeks?
Ms. Leonard, are you there?
Yes.
Did you hear what we just were talking about, possibly doing another stuffer into the envelopes?
I did, I did. And, you know, I think a lot of people saw that, but also the advertisement that Kelly ran on the webpage and also what was put in the newspapers really helped people. And even on the Facebook page that Kelly helped us with. You know, people will get the word, it's passed out there, you know, just by word of mouth, a lot of it is.
Yeah, so I mean, it would easily take, I mean.
Is it a law? Is it, is it, is it a law that we have to have a penalty? Do we have to have a penalty? $10? Well, how much is that? I mean, that's not a lot, but why are we charging $10?
Well, it's 10%.
10%, yeah, or 10. Why do we have a penalty at all? Do we have to have one?
Well, without one, you wouldn't get much encouragement to pay.
Exactly.
Come on, I mean, that, I don't know what I think of. I don't know whether that's true or not. If you don't have it, you don't have encouragement or not.
No, we need to do these in advance a little bit more rather than coming down to the deadline and then starting to change. Because I don't have any problems, but I do have a problem doing things to the last minute.
Well, the only change here is just extending the 30 days, which is pretty nominal. Again, we're still in COVID times. I mean, I think the intention behind this change was to be more in line with other counties because it was egregious to be at 25% for being, you know, one day, you know, 30 days late. You know, you take a property tax bill, $800, $900, you're 25 days late, 30 days late. Now that bill is $1,000. So it's $200 increase right there, that's just for an $800 tax bill. So, you know, getting that down so it's, it's a, you know, an $80 penalty instead of a $200 penalty, that's, that's something that I think is very helpful to people that are struggling. It doesn't seem to be, you know, yeah, it just doesn't seem to be punitive at that point in time. It seems to be something that encourages them to pay the tax as soon as they can. It's not like you get a 10% penalty, but then you incur the interest. But it encourages them to pay that. Whereas if you had no penalty, then they just try to ride the interest rate out as long as possible.
Do you have any penalty to just line this in?
Yeah.
The one thing to remember, so the issue with, with back in June, for the June 5th collection period was, we backed it up until the last day of the fiscal year. We're trying to get all the revenue in for the fiscal year. And so we extended it up to the last point. So if the board said, we want to extend this due date, whatever the board wants to decide. But say you wanted to extend it greater than 25 days, well, going past December 31st, like I said, we're not entering a different fiscal year, so it's a different scenario. But obviously, you know, then you're just pushing back when, when your revenue collection is going to be. Like, but to do, to do the temporary ordinance to push it back, if the board said they want to go that direction and they want to authorize me to advertise today, or I could bring it back in another meeting more formally, I could get the advertisement in if that's what the board wants to do. And then we could have a public hearing probably at the second meeting in October. Understand that you can't do that tonight.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying that we will have plenty of time to get the public hearing done in advance of the mailing of the taxes.
It would be tight. I think the bills are, yeah, I think the bills are mailed in October, I don't know what date Ms. Leonard may.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we are getting ready. Mr. Sheridan, we are getting ready next week to actually run those bills so that they can be out by October 1st.
We need to act on this today.
16th?
Yeah.
September 16th, Ms. Eager?
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to hold a public hearing until?
You wouldn't hold a public, you wouldn't hold a public hearing in time, the only, and like I said, Mr. Payne can maybe chime in on this. I don't remember what it says specifically on the tax bill per se. But I guess if the, well, if you had a bill that said due on this date, but I think if the board, if the board wanted to have a different date after the bills would go out, well, how would the effect of that be?
Depending on what you want to do. We're not going to delay the bill date. We were talking about possibly, and my only question about giving too big of an extension is, do we run ourselves short on the tax side? Because we still got to have that money to pay our bills.
We could, in January, we got a lot, you know, we have, you know, decent sized debt service payments, so.
So that would, that would be my only question to make, in 60 days or something, then?
Oh, no, I'm having it 30 days.
Or the 25 days going to the end of the year?
I mean, it's, it's pretty.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it would be appropriate for you to act on.
Do this one first.
And then if you want to take up the other one, take that as a smooth business.
Okay. Alrighty, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors.
Number one.
Approve to amend Section 20-1-2.1 of the Fluvana County Code as follows. A taxpayer failing to pay real estate and tangible personal property taxes on June 5th or December 5th as applicable shall incur a penalty of 10% of the tax passed due, or $10, whichever is greater, which shall be added to the amount of taxes or levies due from such taxpayer.
Do I have a second? Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker? Ms. Booker? Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All righty, now we'll go to Action Matters.
We didn't do a second motion?
No, because that was only...
That was if we were going to do it in January 1.
Yes, yes.
Next, we will go with D, Community Service Award Resolution, Ms. Jackie Myers.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, let's pull up the resolution here first. We have Dr. Myers on the phone, on Zoom, Dr. Myers on the Zoom meeting as well. So, you know, we received lots of input from the community on recognizing Dr. Myers for her contribution to, you know, being an animal advocate. She was obviously, you know, the resolution doesn't say this, but she was obviously a Fluviana employee for, for many number of years under CSA, providing services to our, to our youth and to the residents of Fluviana County. So I'm going to go ahead and first read, and now, Mr. Payne, would it be appropriate for the board to approve the resolution before I read the resolution first?
No, I think it would be appropriate to read it first.
Okay. So I will go ahead and read the resolution first, and then we can have the board take action. So, the Board of Supervisors, County of Fluviana, Palmira, Virginia, Resolution Number 25 dash 2020, Community Service Award Resolution honoring Dr. Jacqueline A. Myers. Whereas Dr. Jacqueline A. Myers, known to her friends as Jackie, has been recognized by these friends and this community for selfless devotion to the welfare of the animals of Fluviana County and beyond. And whereas Dr. Myers has been a tireless advocate for animals in Fluviana County for nearly 30 years. And whereas Dr. Myers is a volunteer and mentor, offering her passion, skills, and knowledge in person and in print to local, regional, and national animal advocacy organizations and groups. And whereas Dr. Myers previously assisted the County of Fluviana as a humane investigator, served as a co-chair of the Fluviana County Animal Response Team, and authored the county's Animal Response Plan. And whereas Dr. Myers, as a member of the Humane Society of the United States National Disaster Response Team, responded to multiple disasters in which animals were affected, including Hurricanes Katrina and Sandy, a hoarding incident in Spotsylvania County, Virginia, and a multi-state dog fighting incident. And whereas Dr. Myers volunteering with the Humane Society of the United States and a team of animal service organizations participated in the 2009 inauguration of President Barack H. Alaa, providing, among other things, a mobile communications vehicle and emergency animal shelter facilities. And whereas Dr. Myers in 2002, with her husband Dave Sagrin, having heard a call to care for senior animals in their final years, established Peaceful Passings Senior Animal Rescue. The region's first senior animal care facility, attaining nonprofit status in 2009, allowed them to expand their ability to improve, to improve quality of life and extend life expectancy. Now therefore be resolved on the 16th day of September 2020, that the Fluviana County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize Dr. Jacqueline A. Myers for her many contributions to the county, as seen through her community leadership, civic responsibility, volunteer service, community spirit, and innovation. The foregoing resolution was duly and regularly adopted by the Fluviana County Board of Supervisors at a regular meeting of the board held on the 16th day of September 2020 by the following vote, and would be signed by John M. Sheridan, Chair, Fluviana County Board of Supervisors. And as, as I said, you know, we want to thank Dr. Myers for her many contributions to the county from her animal advocacy, as well as just being, you know, a staff member and serving the community for many years. And Dr. Myers is here. And Dr. Myers, would you like to say a few words?
I am so proud of this, I can't begin to tell you. It brings me to tears because I am so appreciative of getting this honor. This is my life's work, and I, I just am elated, and I can't believe that I'm being recognized for this. But I thank you so very, very, very much. It's really appreciated, and I'm so glad that people recognize what I've done. In the time that my rescue is open, we serve 600 to 700 senior hospice and special need animals. I'm very, very proud of that. And we have four rescues in the state of Virginia that have contacted me and told me they're changing their mission and vision to what ours was so that our work can continue with or without me. So I'm just very happy that people have picked up on this senior animal thing and want to carry it forward.
Well, ma'am, thank you so much for everything you've done, not only with the animals, but for everything you've done for the children of this county. And I know how much that means to all of us.
Well, it's a very weird position that I'm in right now because in the last three weeks, I've met with my minister three times and Paul Sheridan to plan my funeral, which is kind of like planning a wedding, if you look at it that way. There's a lot of pieces to be put together, and everybody has been so supportive, and I've had so many people from the community reach out, and I just am so appreciative because this really means everything to me.
That is lucky to have had somebody like you serving those animals for so long, and the children, of course. You deserve all the praise.
I have, most, yes. I have, been my pleasure to work with Jackie with CSA for many, many, many years. And she unders, she understood the families and the children because of her degree as a clinical psychologist. And it was always a pleasure to sit at the table with her and watch her know those students and know what they needed, and to guide the people who were serving them so that those students and their families could get the best service that we could offer. I learned a lot from you, Jackie, and I thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Ms. El. It means so much.
All righty. You've meant the world to us, ma'am, and just thank you for everything. Ms. Booker, would you like to do the honor, ma'am?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Please go ahead, ma'am.
I move, all right, I move the Board of Supervisors, approve the Community Service Award Resolution honoring Dr. Jacqueline A. Myers as presented.
Second.
Do I have a second? Got a motion made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Eager. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Any chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0 now. Now we'll move forward with E, Historic Courthouse Historical Marker, Memorandum of Agreement with VDOT, Mr. Dahl.
This is a pretty simple one. So if the board remembers, there was a historical, historical marker describing the historic courthouse right on Route 15, right in front of the BB&amp;T Bank. A car hit it and took it down. When the park, Palmira Area Revitalization Committee was kind of still running and up until, up until June 30th, when they kind of dissolved, because they kind of had met all their requirements and all the, the projects that they set forward to do, they petitioned VDOT to get the new historical marker set up, placing on the west side of Route 15 on county property. What we were proposing would be a location that would be leveled and a small gravel pad on the county site. And I've got a picture, I've got some pictures showing you where we're proposing it. The estimated expense for the gravel parking pad would be $500 just for the gravel and some, some minor work at the site. So if you look right here, this is the big county parcel. Historical courthouse is right here. Here's the BB&amp;T Bank, and it was right there, so where it says HM, that is where we were proposing to put the new historical marker, and I'll show you some pictures. So here's Route 15 right here. If you look right through the trees right there, that's the BB&amp;T sign. What we're proposing is to put a gravel pad in this area on the side of the road right here. It's fairly level right there. We have trimmed the tree up here a little bit so we can make it more noticeable from 15, and we'll try and get it as close to 15 as possible. And then just here's another picture too, with the star and you showing Route 15, and then right up here to the left is the historic courthouse. So it's, it's a pretty simple memorandum of agreement with VDOT for them to do this. They're going to be placing the historical marker, and really the expense to the county is putting a parking pad for vehicles to pull off from.
Why would we not put it closer to the Route 15 side?
Closer to the road? We could. The only issue is, and it would probably take, now, Calvin, maybe you could help out with this. So Mr. O'Brien asked, why would we not put it closer to Route 15? Was there something from VDOT when you met with them that, that maybe it has to be where it was?
The grade of the land at that point that was suitable for parking. You have to have a 12-foot parking space for the sign, and that was the ideal.
So, so the closer you get to the road, it's, it's far more slant up that way, right in this front area. It's definitely more hilly, so we couldn't do it there. The only other thing we could do is we could, we could remove the tree and, and put it closer to the road there and have the sign there, so it would be less impeded. But that's, that's about it. We, like I said, we wanted to have it on county property and get it as close to the road as possible, but while still having some, you know, a good suitable place for cars to pull off that was fairly level, and that spot meets that requirement.
It's hard to tell, of course, from here, but do you think it'll be relatively visible or not?
You know, I think if we can get it maybe closer to the tree, maybe we could make it more visible. Calvin, how far does the sign have to be away from the actual pad, do you know?
It can be any part of it. You could get the front end or maybe turn it in, so we can put it on that.
So we could maybe put it where the, the sign is up on the front side of, of the, of the tree or by the tree, and, you know, have the parking pad going right up next to it. But something like that where we can get it a little bit more visible. I mean, we could work with VDOT to see what, you know, as we go back out there and determine, like the final, the final location, we can get it as close as possible and make sure that it's not, not hindered from view and, and is visible from 15.
Well, the one thing about getting it away from 15, those ones that are on the side of those roads, we might read the first line, but nobody ever is going to stop reading the whole thing.
No, they don't necessarily, but it does grab your attention. Just drive by, Brad, driving by there, maybe coming from here, but highlighting, you know, that we have the old courthouse there might, might invite some people to stop.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, we could, maybe there's a way where we can put it just on the, on the front side of the tree maybe, and still leave the tree there, because it might be nice as the tree gets, you know, as it's there and it grows, it'll provide shade for, for a parking spot possibly. But if we can get the sign maybe a little more visible, we'll, we'll certainly do what we can with VDOT, working with VDOT.
I think that makes sense personally.
I don't know why we can't, I don't know why we can't put it on the, I don't know why we can't put it on the other side closer to the courthouse. Who's going to drive down 15 and know that that is the marker for the courthouse? If we're thinking about doing tours of Palmira in the future, it seems to me that that marker has more importance being next to the courthouse on the, on that other side. I just don't, you pass markers all the time, and you don't pay very much attention to them. So it should be closer to the property that it is representing. So why can't it go closer to courthouse?
Are you talking like on the left side here, Mrs. Booker?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
There is not enough space to put a parking pad to have a vehicle out of, because that is a VDOT road, to have it out of the VDOT roadway.
But I think she does make point that if we do, make closer someplace... Could we put our parking spot across the street?
Oh, that's a good point. Well, we do have, yeah, thank you, Kelly. We do have some VDOT members on, and I'm not sure if any one of them could assist us. Alan, could you provide any insight to this, possibly? Alan Saunders, can you hear us?
Hi, Administrator Dahl. Yes, I'm sorry, my line was muted. Good evening.
That's all right.
We'd be glad, we'd be glad to meet with the county out there and try to find another location. The speed limit through there is pretty low, so the clearance zone off the edge of the, the pavement is, is not too great, so we could evaluate different locations and take it back to the district traffic engineer and get his blessing.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we, you know, we can, we can work with VDOT, like I, and, you know, really at this point, I mean, we could bring it back to the board for their consideration if, if they want to have more of a final say on where it is and wait for VDOT. Like I said, when we originally went there, this was the spot that VDOT determined to have spotted at that point. But if, if we wanted a completely different location, we could certainly do that.
Is there not some sort of signage?
Yes, you know, we have, we have a marker for SC Abrams High School. It's on 15. SC Abrams High School is on Center Plains Road. They don't know, if you don't know SC Abrams, that marker doesn't say anything other than people who live here in Fluviana County. So the closer it can be to the place that it is honoring, the mark I think is honoring and telling the history, should be close to that place in my personal opinion.
I'm guessing that the purpose of historical markers is to draw attention to the particular or the area, whereas you can have, and I think we probably, our little county signs that we have highlight something about the courthouse already. So they kind of mix purposes, right? One is to sort of draw attention to the area, the other is to provide information. And I'm not sure that, I mean, you can, I'm not sure that you can always accomplish both.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, if, I mean, in this, if you look at the picture on the right, where we have it, I mean, like I said, this is the same picture here in the same location. If you are parked there and you're looking at the historic courthouse sign, I mean, you're going to see the historic courthouse from where you are. I mean, it's, it's going to be very visible off to your left when you're there. But again, if, if they want, if you want the sign on this side, maybe we can still have the parking spot on, on the right-hand side, but that's something we would have to work with VDOT on. But again, the historical marker signs are usually on the side of the busy thoroughfare, so there is some recognition to pull off and look at it.
Anybody who pulls up that road already knows that there's a historical courthouse right there.
Unless they're going to the courthouse.
Unless you're going to the...
Sure.
Then they, yeah, right, unless they're going to the courthouse, so...
And, and we are still working on some additional signage, you know, some county signage in, in that area too. This is just something to, you know, hopefully that, that passerby's or anyone that's interested would see from the roadway.
It's just like the 1-4, something just down there on the side of Route 6, that's a mile away from 20 or half a mile away from 1-4.
Well, let's see what VDOT comes back with.
Okay, we can, we can do that. We'll, we'll go back. I mean, is the general location fine, or do you all want something completely different?
I personally think closer to the highway is best myself.
I'd be with you, Tony.
Down the courthouse, when you see that sign, you see the courthouse. That's, that's where I am with that, as Mozzell.
Well, the one thing about it, if we can put the parking space where the star is and put the sign on the other side of the road, you can sit in your car at the parking space and take a picture of both the sign and the courthouse.
Perhaps Mr. Saunders has a comment on sort of the general theory of these markers that he wants to provide us some more background on.
Mr. Saunders, did you, did you hear that?
And what we would do is, we want to make sure that we coordinated with the Department And what we would do is we want to make sure that we've coordinated with the Department of Historic Resources. They typically provide a general parameter based, and then based on our roadway design manual as far as clear zone requirements, we have some flexibility in placing the sign. So if you have a prioritized list of goals, we could meet out there with Calvin and spot place a couple of locations and let you pick those and review them. And then from there, based on the, the site that you would select, we'll follow up with our district traffic engineer and make sure that that's okay and have the sign placed.
Thank you very much. That sounds like a good idea. That way we can have more options to choose from and hopefully we can get through that, not lose the county budget. All right.
So then do you want us to bring this back for table and bring it back?
Table and bring it back, yes, sir. All right, we move forward with F, memorandum of agreement between the county of Fluvan and the Economic Development Authority of Fluvan County Carez Act, Mr. Doll.
Yes, Mr. Chair, okay, so. Okay, so this is, as Mr. Chairman said, memorandum of agreement with county and the EDA. This is for broadband expansion. So if you remember, this broadband, this, this MOA is between the county and the EDA and it authorizes the EDA to enter into an agreement with Central Virginia Services, Inc., DBA Firefly Broadband, to extend fiber broadband into an underserved area of the county. As we discussed before, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, you know, this is, this is necessary to help for education, safety, health, welfare, convenience, and prosperity of our residents. It also helps for distance learning, telehealth, teleworking, things like that. The broadband expansion project meets the requirements for utilizing CAREZ Act funds. As we discussed before at the August 19th, 2024 meeting, the board chose to move forward with the eligible project option two and have a, have a map showing that. But again, basically coming up between the Carriesburg Elementary School, Carriesburg Complex on 15, going south down to Dixie, from Dixie going down past the community center, and then also from Dixie going east down towards Gravel Hill Road. And that was a 7.4-mile stretch of fiber that affected 150 homes and businesses. Again, like I said, I talked about, you know, teleworking, virtual learning. Again, the, the project also serves as a launching point for further extensions of fiber and internet access into the southern part of the county. Having fiber in place also makes backhaul available for cell and fixed wireless providers. And part of the agreement, SEVAC Firefly Broadband will provide free Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi hotspots at their expense to Carriesburg Elementary School, the ball fields right there in front of the Carriesburg Complex down at the community center. What else here? Firefly will pay for the work to link that piece of the project back into their system and infrastructure. And this is just a diagram here showing the project area again. Here's Carriesburg Road, right around here is Carriesburg Elementary School and Carriesburg Complex going south on 15. The, the, the fiber would go underground right here to Dixie from Dixie, basically go into the sidewalks into Fort Union, stopping there. And then from Dixie going east, like I said, going down Gravel Hill Road and stopping at Old Head Road. And like I said, we're trying to get this done within a period of time. Here's, as, as Ms. Twiznail said before, and as we stated previously, the project has to be done and in place by December 30th. Having some discussions with Mr. Wood, you know, if we can get some agreements going quicker, then they can finalize what they're doing and get started on work. You know, there's, there's no guarantees. They certainly said they can be done by December 30th and, and they even had some thoughts that they can be done even, you know, possibly two to, two to three weeks sooner than that as well for this, for this particular project. I also, if the board wants to see, we have the actual memorandum of agreements that we could pull up, which also includes the broadband expansion project agreement, the agreement that the EDA, if, if the board approves this tonight, what is the next step then? Then the EDA would have a special meeting next week and the EDA would actually approve the agreement for the project with, with SEVAC, I'm sorry, not SEVAC, but CBSI and Firefly Broadband.
And this is the same project we've been talking about the last two meetings?
It's the same project that we've been talking about the last two meetings. The board has already approved funding for up to 520,000 to, as a pass through, through the EDA to, to complete the project. We are only going to be billed for actual expenses associated with the project.
All right, are there any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Let's see, I'm sorry.
All right, you go ahead and move it.
I know, I'm trying to, well, here, I'll move it once we get down to that point.
I move the board supervisors approve that memorandum of agreement between Fluvan County and the Economic Development Authority of Fluvan County, the EDA with exhibit one thereto related to the grant of 520,000 of the 4.758 million Fluvan County received from the Commonwealth of Virginia as part of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Package, Security Act allocated to the EDA for the broadband expansion project as previously approved on August 19th, 2020. Subject to reasonable modifications approved by the county administrator and the county attorney to exhibit one and further authorize the county administrator to approve and if necessary, execute such agreement subject to the county attorney's approval asked for.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
All right, motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Eager. Ms. Eager?
Hi.
Ms. Booker?
Hi.
Weaver? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Now we'll move forward G, public hearing advertisement for FY21 Designs Crossroads Budget Amendment. Ms. McGyver?
Good evening, I'm here to talk to you about money to increase Designs Crossroad budget again. We talked about this several months ago, held a public hearing. And at that time, it was decided that we would take out debt service and just take 500,000 from unassigned fund balance and put to the budget. We have applied for and received debt service in the amount of $2,829,790.75. So I'm coming to you tonight so that we can advertise to have a public hearing to increase the Designs Crossroad budget by that amount. Because if it's more than 1% of the current budget, we have to have a public hearing here to do that.
Yeah, again, this action is strictly administrative in nature. You know, the board already approved the debt funding. This is just actually approving the budget that is associated with the debt funding. If you remember, we closed on the debt funding back in August 5th, I think it was. And the county got an interest rate of total all-in cost interest rate of 1.91% on this debt. We've already requested some requisition on the funds and, and this is just strictly administrative, but due to the dollar amount, we have to come forward.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move the board of supervisors authorize staff to advertise for a public hearing on an FY21 budget amendment of $2,829,790.75 from debt proceeds to Design Crossroads FY21 budget to be held on October 21st, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got motion made by Ms. Eager, seconded by Ms. Booker. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Weaver? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Appointments H, board commission and committee appointments, Ms. Solis.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, I'll think Ms. Solis is, I'll pinch it from Ms. Solis. So one, we just have one, one appointee for the Fluvan Partnership for Aging with a term, Gary Davis, and is this a?
An expired term.
It's a? Okay. Okay. So again, it's an unexpired term, but the term would begin September 16th, 2020 and then December 31st, 2023. And I can pull up a link to Mr. Davis' application if the board.
He's the only one applying?
Correct.
That makes it pretty simple. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move the board supervisors approve.
I move the board of supervisors approve.
Keep going, Ms. Booker.
Okay, all right. I move the board of supervisors approve Mr. Gary Davis for the Fluvan County Partnership for Aging with an unexpired term that began January 1, 2020.
Second. Motion's made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Now we have presentation, VDOT quarterly report. Bethel? Not even gonna try it tonight, Bethel. Are you there, young lady?
Good evening, Chairman Sheridan, members of the board. Bethel Caffialo with the Louisa Ranci. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So I'll just be going over the highlights from this month's report and can answer any questions that you have as we go through it. You can scroll down to the smart scale. So three smart scale projects were submitted last month in August. It's the roundabout at 53 and Turkey Sag, the roundabout at 250 and 631, and then a project for additional funding at the left turn lane of 600 and 618. Those are currently in the process of being screened and validated before they move on to scoring. So we'll hear more about that in the next several months. You can scroll down to the next page. The roundabout at 53 and 618, it's still on schedule to be completed this fall. The contractor is currently planning a traffic switch to direct traffic into the circle starting on next Thursday on the 24th. So if you have any questions or concerns about that, please let us know. Also, the survey or the review for the survey at the Village of Palmyra in Columbia, like I'll be completing that by the end of next week. So I'll share with you then what our recommendations are. And then can scroll to the next page. So our resurfacing contractor, he's still on schedule and should be in Fluvan County this fall. There is a link, yeah, it's right there. If there are any citizens that want to check the progress of the contractor, they can use that link to look at the map. And we will be giving advance warning to affected citizens as the work is scheduled. And you can go ahead to the next section. We've completed, you know, just generally like two crosspipe replacements on Route 15 in the last few months. We're also working with our traffic engineers to find a time to simulate the one-way traffic in the Village of Palmyra. And then we've got a couple of other studies that our traffic engineers are working on as well that are listed here. And then just lastly, at the end, we, like our, our area headquarters are hard at work and they've completed about, I think it's 123 work orders so far this fiscal year. So we're appreciative of everything that they're doing. And yeah, that's about it. Are there any questions that you guys have for us?
I have a question.
I'll just say on here too, for the, for a couple of board members, there's also some things on here that I, that I briefed you on last week. But if you have more specific questions for Bethel, specifically regarding like some of the roads down in Brimmo, and then I know, Mrs. Eager, you had some questions as well.
Yes, I have a question about the Blue Ridge Road. It's off of 250, just past the prison. I've had questions about a right turn lane going into the Blue Ridge Road. And I think you've studied it and turned it down. But could you tell me what I could tell this person who's been calling me? He'd like to speak with you.
Sure, you can definitely pass on his contact information to me or, or my contact information to him and I can speak with him. I believe that what our traffic engineers look at is the counts for not only the through traffic on 250, but also the number of vehicles that, that make that right turn lane. And there has to be, there's a threshold that those right turn lane counts have to meet in order to be warranted. And, and I believe that it did not meet that threshold. And so that's why their recommendation was to not, not put in a right turn lane. But I can, I can communicate that more with the, with the citizen and give them some more information if they'd like.
Okay, and how do I get in touch with you?
Eric Doll, he's got my contact information. He can pass that on.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
I have a question. Yes, I have a question. I think this may be my second or third time that I have asked about in certain parts of the road, there has been asphalt just dropped and dripped, sometimes over the double yellow line. It is not, and I was told that perhaps they would come back and, and even up the asphalt so that it is in a square or a rectangle and it's not just dripped in chunks. It is very unattractive. And I'm just wondering, do you think these are some of the areas that you're going to resurface? Or do we have to live with the asphalt that just dropped on the roads?
Yeah, this might be something where it, it would be a good idea to meet with you or maybe the citizen who has concerns out on the road. Because I know you mentioned the Salonia Road before and that is a road that is going to be resurfaced this fall when the contractor gets out there. But we did go out and check it ourselves and we didn't find anything that seemed off. So maybe if we can get in contact with the citizen and address their concerns directly.
Yeah, I'd like to have been out there with you. When you went out there, you said you didn't see anything. But I will also, I have some other areas. I'm going to find those other areas and I'll get those to you and let you know what I'm talking about. I will even take a picture if I can. And then we can, we can talk about that in the future so that I can understand and I can tell the citizens that you're coming back to resurface or whatever. If you're not, then they just need to know that.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'd appreciate that. If you can, yeah, send us any other information so we know what, what to look for when we're going out there. That would be really great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Thank you so much, Bethel.
Yeah, no problem, have a great day.
You too, ma'am. Next is Jay, November 30th election presentation, Ms. Pace. Yeah, I was gonna say, I was looking over, I didn't see Ms. Pace.
Yes, good evening, I'm Catherine Hobbs, Chair of the Electoral Board. And my colleagues on the board, Patricia Leeson, Vice Chair, and Susan Angra, Director of the General Effort. And we are here for requests, so along the way, please stop and ask what sort of provide the information that you're seeking from the board here. So as a general update, first of all, we made a budget request. At the time, we made the request, we made people aware that the General Assembly was in the process of considering a big handful of election law changes. Most of those been passed. The most significant of those is that when we were planning the budget, the law at the time allowed for seven days of no excuse early voting. Now, on November, November 11th election, we're under. Now, on November 30, November 30 election, we're under 45 days of no excuse early voting. And also absentee by mail no excuse voting. So that's the biggest change that sort of frames everything we're gonna present to you this evening. Things have changed always from one launch to the other. The other voter registration has increased about 11%. We're able to make the bill of entry voters again at 20 now. And this election, we already have a record request for the number of ballots requested by mail. I think we're ever, I think we've exceeded our record by almost 1,000. And a certain year, we may have hit close to 2,000. But on Friday, the registrar and first staff will be mailing out a 3,000 ballot to voters we have requested them. Just as a way to organize.
I hate to interrupt you. Let's answer the question so much as in make sure, you might need to take your mask down a little bit because I think they're having some trouble hearing you.
Sure, speak up more.
Or speak up louder.
Okay, sure. So framing the way we're gonna present this information to you, there are three ways that all of the voters can vote in this election and in forthcoming elections. We can vote by mail without any reason. Voters can request to have a ballot mailed to them by October 23rd. Any voter who has already requested, like by midweek, by November 15th, who has already requested the ballot be mailed to them, theirs will go out beginning September 18th. We can now vote in person in the registrar's new location without having to specify an excuse for needing to vote early in person. That begins on Friday, the 18th during the hours that the registrar's office is open and on the two Saturdays prior to the November 3rd general election. And then, as usual, we can go on Election Day to the polling places where we're properly registered to vote and cast our ballots in person on Election Day. This gets a little complicated with the change that has been enacted as of the General Assembly Special Session just a few weeks ago. Voters can actually, who have requested an absentee ballot by mail, can now come to a drop box location. This is a COVID change at their polling place. If you've requested a mail ballot and you don't get it in the mail in time, you can take it to your polling place, bypass the regular line, and deposit it in a secure drop box at your polling place on Election Day. Or similarly, at the registrar's office, you can, there'll be a drop box there. And instead of waiting in the early voting in person line, you can bypass that line and go straight to the drop box and deposit your ballot there. Or you can put it back in the mail, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. Next slide. While all these changes are happening and voter registration has already increased, voter registration is ongoing. The registrar staff is accepting, always accepts throughout the year, new voter registration applications to be eligible to vote in the November 3rd general election. You have to have submitted your voter registration application form by October 13th. And this is probably the most detailed slide, and it's the most detailed amount of work that's happening in the registrar's office now. The management of the absentee by mail ballots is a big endeavor. Voters can request their absentee ballots by mail, in person, online, by email or fax. They can call the registrar's office and ask to have an application mailed to them. When the registrar receives a completed ballot application, she and her office have to, by code, act on that and then three days of receipt of the completed application. Law, the code was changed in the General Assembly Special Session just a few weeks ago that now voters have the opportunity to cure a mistake on an improperly filled out mailed in ballot envelope. Not the ballot itself, because that doesn't get opened originally, but when they receive the mailed ballot back or put in a drop box, they check to make sure that they identify what is attempting to cast that because we're logging all the time. We know who's requested a ballot application and we know who's turned them back. And if it's missing important information, particularly a signature, it used to be that that ballot would not be able to be counted. The law has now changed the governor's and allowing for a cure period where the registrar's office has to act immediately when an error that would prevent a ballot from being cast is found to contact that voter and allow them the opportunity to come in and fix it so that the ballot can be cast. The ballots can be mailed back, and if so, they have to be postmarked later than Election Day, the 3rd of November for the general election. A law change effective for this election is that it used to be that they had to be received at the registrar's office, received in the mail by Election Day. They now have to be postmarked by Election Day and received later than noon on the third day following the election, which is Friday, November 6th. This means that the work to officially reconcile all the votes and calculate and count all of them for our absentee precinct will be, it might happen a little later. We usually wrap up on Friday after election and have everything confirmed. But if we're still receiving absentee ballots, and this is statewide, on the Friday after the election, things will, the numbers will be posted a little later than usual. This also has a big staffing impact because with the number of ballots that are being mailed out and the requirement that they're acted on, the applications are acted on within three days of receipt and the requirement to cure any problems that are discovered during the 45-day election period, early voting period, the registrar and her staff will need to be going to the post office, for example. That's one of the many ways labor increases twice daily. They'll have to pick up the mail because of the time that they have to then go back at the close of business to have submitted everything that they processed. And when we mail out ballots, we send them out with a certificate of mailing so that there's an official log that we have mailed that ballot to a particular voter within the timeframe of receiving the ballot request. That costs a little bit of money, a lot of money, and some, and I think that's kind of underneath where the... So we're mailing ballots out with a certificate of mailing, which adds about 41 cents to every batch of three or more for every envelope in a batch of three or more. It adds about 41 cents in postage. The cost of mailing the ballot itself is about 65 cents when we're using a meter. Trying to think what else needs to be covered in this slide here.
Miss Hobbs, I have one question. So there's a Mailboxes Express right next door. They couldn't be utilized? Does it have to be the post office per se?
They can't do the postmark and they can't do the certificate of mailing. So like on Friday, they'll be taking 3,000 ballots and putting a certificate of mailing on each. Yeah, a Friday mail facility is not the same as USPS. Just also, the process of assembling all of this is massive, which is one of the reasons why we needed the new office space just to have the physical space to be able to put all of these ballot envelopes together and not be working on the floor was one of the reasons why we needed it. Is there anything you all want to add to this? Because this is one of the more complicated pieces.
I know when they say there's a lot of citizens, you're gonna have to come closer. They'll never hear you.
I just wanted to make the point that there are a number of citizens mechanic who are volunteering their time to assist with all this. People who generally work as officers of election have come in to help the registrar with all this work. Perhaps in recognition that might be an eyewitness as well.
We've hired some staff, but we also, the registrar's office works with a lot of volunteers to keep this process going.
The one thing to touch on, so as Ms. Hobbs, you did approve a budget with factoring in seven days early voting. Well, it's 45 days. So in some of the carryover requests, there is going to be a request from the registrar's office to carry over some of the funds to offset and accommodate some of that change that occurred. Because remember, when we approved the budget, the 45-day early voting had not been approved at that point. So there'll be some discussion about funds being carried over at that point, specifically for part-time and election officers as well.
Yep. And there's actually, there is a key budget change that came about with the General Assembly Special Session just a couple of weeks ago. The state has mandated that all mailed ballots be, that the return envelope that is included with mailed ballots includes prepaid postage. And the state has allocated $2 million in Louisville to reimburse locality for that postage, but they have not yet determined how they will allocate that $2 million, nor have they determined that it's sufficient to cover all the requests, all the postage that will be consumed.
Is there confusion, or have you heard of confusion around people maybe expecting to receive ballots in advance as opposed to requesting them? And if so, how, why spread is that confusion?
There are so many laws, changes this year happening in a major election. The turnout in a presidential election can be almost double what we see in an all-year election. But I don't want to say that there's confusion. I don't want to call it like that. There are many, many questions. And it starts with third-party organizations providing the application to request an absentee ballot by mail be mailed to them. That was one source of confusion. The application they provided was legitimate, oftentimes pre-filled. Voters needed to be careful to make sure that that pre-filled information was accurate for them and that it was being returned for the return address on the envelopes in that third-party organization's mailing. That started a pretty big community round of confusion because many people received that mailing. Then with COVID, we have had in the June primary, a really large push to encourage voters to take advantage of voting by mail in order to keep the lines at a minimum for in-person voting to enable social distancing at the polling places. Now, there's, within current media coverage, concern about the... So then voters are wondering, I've requested to vote by mail, but should I? So the voter registration office, registrar's office, they're fielding lots of phone calls. Another place where there could be some confusion is when the application to vote absentee, you could request absentee for the June primary and then also check a box on that form saying that you wanted to vote by mail for all elections in the calendar year, which would then automate the process of having the ballot mailed to you for the November general election. But when they made that decision, it was before there was concern about the mailing system. So I think most people following social media and current affairs have seen that there's a big push to encourage early voting in Virginia and early voting in person. And then a lot of confusion about if you receive your vote by mail ballot because you previously requested it, is it best to actually take advantage of a drop box? And the drop box location legislation wasn't passed until the Special Session of the General Assembly just a couple of weeks ago. And the Department of Elections only at the beginning of September gave us guidance on how to implement the drop box legislation. There's confusion about what's the best, safest, most secure way, and will my vote be counted? The truth, there's even been confusion historically about whether absentee ballots are counted at all unless there's a tie break. That's sort of like, those of us in the room may not understand why there's that question. But people see the results reported for their polling place. And then in Fluvana and in many locations, we have a precinct that they may not recognize by name. That's the Central Absentee Precinct. And that's where all of those absentee by mail and in-person votes, all of that is tabulated. They are. Now there's a cure out, which means all those votes are counted, provided there, if there was an error, yeah, that was cured. So there are a lot of questions, and there are a lot of changes, and it's understandable that there's a lot of questions.
If you request a mail-in ballot, does that prevent you from then mailing in person?
No. So this is a reason why...
That's what I was wondering.
No. So this is why we keep track. If you've requested an application, that's flagged in the voter registration system. If you've returned your application, that's flagged in the voter registration. If we mailed you a ballot, we have the certificate of mailing to document that we mailed that ballot to you. Then you now have until noon Friday on Election Day to get it in the mail or, well, for it to be postmarked if you're choosing to deliver it by mail. This year, all of the mailed ballots will include a barcode on them that makes it so the voter can track whether or not their ballot, say they put it in the mail on November 1st, and they want to see whether or not it's been received. So they can follow their ballot through the system. They can track it. And say November 3rd happens, and they find out that their ballot has yet to be received and they're concerned that maybe it won't be received by noon on Friday. They can still go to the polling place and cast what's called a provisional ballot. We have a record that they had requested, and we have mailed them a ballot, but they only get to vote once. So they can cast their provisional vote. It's kept in a separate envelope apart from all the other ballots. And this is part of what we're doing when we're reconciling votes. And then after the election on the following days, we track whether or not we have actually received back the mailed ballot. And if we haven't received it back, then that provisional vote could cast. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you had said that the ballot could still be postmarked on November 3rd.
Could be postmarked on November 3rd, but now it doesn't have to be received until Friday, noon. So on November 3rd, theirs hasn't been received, and they want to be extra careful. They can go and cast a provisional ballot, which is segregated from all the other ballots until we can determine that that's the one and only ballot for that voter that will be cast.
And that's good, but you wonder how aware the voters will be that all those options are available to them.
Which is why we have to... Where we might think, I'm sorry, Ms. Reader?
I have to say that it's a mess.
It would be a mess, but we have really good records. The part that is a mess is that we can't predict the staffing levels that we'll need in person on Election Day for a presidential election. We need to train, to prepare, to have as many officers of elections who are, to serve at a busy presidential election as we would in any year, even though we have 45 days of early voting, because we can't predict how when we mail ballots, we'll actually return them by mail or by drop box prior to Election Day. They may come to the polling place and put them in a drop box there, or they may come to the polling place, and we may have extra labor where they're working with the chief and assistant chief at the polling place to cast the provisional ballot. So, well, the standard voters and non-standard voters and the potential for non-standard voters who have to go through a different process, the provisional ballot process, high this year. So our staffing needs may very well continue to be high. We'll be able to have a better sense of that near the Election Day when we can tell how many people have voted early in person and what percentage have already been returned by mail or by drop box. But we have to train well before we can make the minimum we need to train like with the normal presidential election year as far as our staffing needs to go.
Explain that we're the drop box department.
So the new code requires that we have drop boxes. It's for this election in particular. It's a COVID requirement. It's a drop-off location is how they have termed it. So the requirement is that it's available at the registrar's office and at every place on Election Day so that voters can bypass the regular line. We have the option of having more locations, but the security requirements are not met in this. but the security requirements are not met in this county in particular because they have to be on public property. If they're not staffed locations, we have to have security camera footage on them and they have to be secured. So the board and the registrar feel that the best option for the county for this election is to have them to meet the requirement per office and the polling locations.
Which is, I mean, I certainly appreciate that, but given that, you know, some of our precincts are, you know, pretty disparate in terms of travel time and so on. That's, I mean, there are lots of options, of course, but having Dropbox in some other strategic locations would have been helpful.
If we had more than a September notice where we could plan to keep them secure and identifying places that are public property and that are secure in Flavana, it's tough. We've thought about some. One that came to mind actually was the sheriff's office because it lasts 24 hours. But we usually don't even like to have in uniform police officers at our polling places because there are voters who will be intimidated by casting their vote in front of an authority figure like that. So we're not sure that we're comfortable with that.
In addition to that, we're going to have to have people go into all these places from the registrar's office to pick them up and have them process within the requisite period of time that's required by law.
And you can't just have one person go and pick up ballots. It needs to be two people and they need to be willing to represent opposite person. So then the staffing needs to pick up all of these ballots. And that will be an increase on Election Day because in order to process all the ballots that are dropped off at the polling places approving officers of elections and in custody for those ballots and not just one.
Well, I think it goes back to what Mr. Weaver said earlier this meeting and he says quite often, you get yourself in trouble when you try to rush two things. And with, hey, and not said to you, Ms. Hopp, Ms. Hopp? I actually feel like I understand it slightly now. Thank you. Okay, I do want to appreciate that because I know how hard the three of y'all and the rest of the group has worked.
It's, the registrar's office is flat out busy. They are, it is volunteers and extra staff and hired on the fly because partly because of COVID, partly because of the move. We, it is a big, big endeavor with the General Assembly making well-intentioned changes on shortness. It's a lot of pressure.
Well-intentioned, but like I said with Mr. Weaver, I agree with what we've heard and say that quite a few times with us.
I do have just maybe two more, two more questions here. One is, is the, maybe since you have, since you're getting a certificate of mailing, are you going to be tracking delivery times at all? I mean, are you going to have a sense like, okay, we sent these out, but we haven't gotten any responses? And follow-up on that same question would be particularly disconcerting would be that we do see a slowdown in the mailing system and we do have a number of ballots that, that come November 5th have not been received that you show as tracked. Will there be any effort to cure that process if you were at that point in time? Because one could argue that, you know, in essence, something went wrong with the ballot at that point in time, right?
And unfortunately, that does happen and it has happened historically. The law up until this election had been that they needed to be received in the registrar's office by Election Day.
So that would be the provisional ballot.
And, well, and so then they have the opportunity to cast the provisional ballot. We, it is not a large quantity, but ballots are rejected at nearly every election, possibly every election. Statewide, certainly every election ballots are rejected because they're received after the deadline. We can't do anything about that. The certificate of mailing documents that we have done our due diligence to put it into the appropriate system for delivering the ballot. That means that we have done that within the timeframe of having received the application. It doesn't actually allow us to track that that doesn't have the tracking on it. It's just documents that we've done it. So then the voter who has requested the ballot, it's on them to pay attention to whether or not they have received it in a timely fashion. And then when they put it in the mail, if that's how they choose to do it, they now have the ability, the voter has the ability to track whether or not it has made it to the registrar's office through that barcode system.
And I assume all the details are included in the mail ballot.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a big and will be a statewide campaign to inform voters of this. I personally have already received mail from the Postal Service advising to allow at least seven days for a mailed ballot to be returned.
And last question on my part anyhow is simply, you know, there's been discussion in the media for certain about perhaps, you know, contention in terms of the process and, and requesting that, that people show up at the polling places if you were to ensure that nothing nefarious is going on. Is there any concern on the part of the Board of Elections here as to security? And if so, what are we planning on doing about that?
So our security planning for elections isn't, is not, I'm not going to go into details about, about that. But we, we do coordinate before every election with the Sheriff's Department. They are always available nearby if there's contention. They're always patrolling in the area. This is me just editorializing, but I feel that in Flavana, we are actually very lucky that our polling places tend to be pretty congenial. Even almost celebratory, like neighborhood gatherings that people, neighbors see each other in our polling places and they find out who's been, had a birthday or who had a baby or that kind of thing. We are prepared for all kinds of different trouble. It's not something that I'm particularly concerned about happening in this community. I tend not to worry about that. However, with the registrar's office and its current location and more public than it has been, we have met with the sheriff's office to get their advice on how to keep her office and her staff secure. And we've shared some of that information with Mr. Hopp.
And the other thing is parties can certify a poll watcher. They have to come to the, they have to have a certificate that they bring to the polling place and they can observe work at the poll book station. But no other people can just wander in and interfere with the process.
Sure. And, and while I'm not going to go into the details of our security planning, everything we do to keep ballots unvoted, all the steps we take along the way, including programming and sealing the voting machines, that is open to observers where each party can nominate an observer and witness us programming the machines and verifying that they're counting the ballots correctly and sealing the machines and how many ballots have been cast in the machine to its length. It's not when it's sealed. All of that, the political parties send representatives to watch the board, which has, has multiple parties represented on it too. It's a, it's a, to the ordinary voter, it's probably very obtuse, but to the court within the system, it's open and visible, it's transparent.
I really, I apologize, this is my last question.
You said that too much.
I did a lot, yeah, a lot of questions. Is there a larger, say, perimeter around the Electoral's Office? You brought up the point about, you know, being in a public place. I think last election cycle, we had men with guns staying in front of an office there that was viewed more or less as intimidation. Is, is there a larger perimeter that is allowed by law so that that kind of behavior is essentially creating some form of intimidation? It's one thing to intimidate a campaign office, it's another thing to intimidate voters going to a polling place.
During the early voting period, the registrar's office would, would treat early voting like it's a polling place. So no electioneering is allowed within 40 feet of any entrance to the building. I'm not going to say the exact number of yards of, but the bullhorns, there's a restriction on how far away a bullhorn can be used and it's farther than 40 feet. The law regarding weapons in a polling place is that they are only prohibited if they're prohibited already in the building and in the county facility, whatever the county's rules are on, on a weapon in that facility would apply. We do have voters who open carry and I'm sure we have voters who conceal carry into a polling place. We train our officers of election about how to react and help voters who may feel intimidated by seeing an open carry weapon. You're not going to see the concealed carry weapon. And part of that training includes continuously asking voters waiting in line, how's your experience been today? And it gives them the opportunity to let us know if they're feeling intimidated. And then we train to de-escalate situations so that everybody can move through the line and have the opportunity to ask their ballot without feeling threatened. So just wrapping up the other, we've talked about some of this, the, the early voting in person. This process starts on Friday this week. It functions exactly like voting at your polling place. You show your, your acceptable form of ID. The law has changed this year to allow a wider variety of identification. You show your acceptable form of ID, you check in, we log in live time. And this is part of the IT requirements required for the office. And in live time, we log that that voter has been checked in and was casting a ballot so that the poll books are kept current during the early voting period. They cast their vote as usual. And then daily, we are reconciling the number of voters checked in with the number of votes cast on to make sure that all the numbers add up. At the end of the election, the number of voters checked in should equal the number of ballots issued just for the absentees that aren't returned because they choose to vote some other way. But at a polling place, for example, checked in, ballots issued and cast to the machine, less voids and spoiled votes all equal out. Lots of security measures in place. And then the, we've covered the drop boxes at the polling places and I think we've covered it.
Alrighty, are there any questions from your board, not counting Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much. We do appreciate you guys coming out tonight. We appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we'll now move forward with the consent agenda. K, minutes of September the 2nd, 2020, Ms. Solis. L, Community Planning Month Proclamation, Mr. Miles, Community Development. M, waiver of fees for registrar office sign permit, Mr. Doll. N, Upper Brembo Agricultural Forestal District Review and Renewal, Mr. Robinson. O, Carriage Throat, WWTP, UV Disinfection Expansion Project Agreement Number Two. Ms. Toller? P, Accounts Payable Reports for August of 2020, Ms. McGyver. Is there anything we need to pull? I hear you turning, pardon.
No, I'm, I've got some of my figures mixed up here.
Take that.
So I'll let you move on.
You sure?
Yeah.
Alrighty, do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by second by, Ms. Eager beat both of y'all to it. Second by Ms. Eager. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Ms. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair of Votes, aye, and the Senate ban agenda has been adopted. Well, now move forward, unfinished business. Uh, let's do the three before we do the allocations.
You want to do the, that's fine, we can do that.
Let's do R, Burn Building Update, Mr. Doll.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so let me move this here so you can see. So if you remember, we've been working on the burn building for quite some time. So the invitation for bid was issued in June, June 15th. The invitation for bid closed August 5th. Two bids were received. And unfortunately, there are some discrepancies between the IFB and the specifications provided by the engineers, which may have contributed to confusion with vendors. Right now, they believe, and Ms. Toller believes the best option is to reissue the IFB with changes to the, to the specifications in order to resolve confusion and hopefully open the project up to more competition. One thing to remember, reissuing the IFB will not significantly reduce the cost. However, from a procurement standpoint, the IFB should be reissued. Just kind of going back to cost again, so if you remember, we've got a grant for $480,000, for $450,000 for construction, $30,000 for architecture and engineering. This last round here, the low bid came in at $987,000. So you can see we are drastically short to complete the project from the county standpoint, if the county wants to, well, depending upon what the county funding level is. The county had always kind of earmarked putting some money into the project, but I want to say it was closer, it was closer to the, you know, $400,000 range maximum is, is what, is what was discussed previously. And just one thing to keep in mind, this $987,000 one still doesn't include a contingency. Doesn't include any special inspections that are needed. Doesn't include construction administration and there would be some electric and water hookups. So you can, you can probably factor in some of the construction administration inspection and electrical. I mean, you're easily looking at probably another, I'm going to say $20,000 to $25,000 in some of those components. And then just a contingency. You know, normally you would say you would want to maybe have a 10% contingency on any construction project. So with that being said, you know, you may not need the contingency, but a contingency on almost a million dollar projects, $100,000. Now, with some of these buildings, you would think and you'd hope that are prefab, that there would be less, less changes than like, I'm like, you know, doing a water line or anything like that, but you just never know. So again, we're coming up short on, on the funding stream to kind of, you know, offset the grant and then where the, the final project's going to come in. The one thing that, that, you know, let me go to the next slide here. So the one thing that Ms. Toller, Mr. Powell, who is the project engineer, Ben Powell, and then, you know, the, the committee that kind of oversees this, you know, they've kind of continually go back to the drawing board to see if there's any specifications that can be removed to, to cut costs. And the only one that, that would be anything that would be of significant cost is, is removing the asphalt drive, which, you know, may be great right now, so you're saving $80,000, but, but what does that do long-term? The asphalt truck drive would probably be needed if you've got heavy trucks driving over, but that's, that's one thing. Again, trying to cut any other specifications are not going to drastically reduce, reduce what the overall cost is going to be. The county has asked the FRA to contribute. So, so the FRA gets state fire funds. And, and you know, one, one proposal I, I had asked Mr. Powell and some of the, some of the folks on the Burn Committee is, is do the fire companies want to put any money in from their state fire money that they get to maybe offset some costs of the project? Right now, they have a pot of money that's about $300,000 in state fire funds. Now, each one of them using for different things. Some of them used to use the money to reimburse the county for the debt service payments. And, you know, when we've been providing the state an allocation of carryover that, of that $300,000, it is, it has been said that some of the, some of the $300,000 would be used for the burn building project. But, and I think we've got lots of fire and rescue folks on here, or a couple of fire and rescue folks on here to chime in. But from what I understand, and, and maybe they can chime in, I'm not sure if they're interested in using some of the state, some of the state fire money for that. Again, we're, we're looking at ways to try and get the project done. So who do we have on? John Lyne, Richie Constantino, so they can certainly chime in because they've been, you know, intimately familiar with this project along the way. So, yeah, they both open. So Mr. Lyne, Mr. Constantino, you, you both are, are able to chime in as you like. So Mr. Lyne, Mr. Constantino, you you both are are able to chime in as you like.
So this is, this is the John Lyne. The, I'd just like to make it clear that the FRA does not have the authority to provide that funds. That money belongs to the fire departments and so it is up to the the four fire chiefs to decide what they can contribute from their funds. It is not an FRA account, it is a state fire funds provided to the fire departments.
Yeah, what we did
We did that Monday night after the FRA meeting. And I have not gotten an answer back from the fire chiefs yet.
Yeah, the county gets state fire funds and then that is, that is dispersed to the treasurer and then they split it up to the chiefs individually. And so, yes, Mr. Mr. Ly is correct. The money, the money goes to the fire companies, but it comes from the, it comes to the county and then we disperse it to the fire companies.
How much are those funds?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
But, you know, in addition, they use the funds to buy equipment, they use to buy turnout gear and other things. So so I can understand why they would not want to use all of their fire funds. And 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 again, each company, they have different amounts. One company may have fifty thousand, someone may have, you know, seventy five thousand, someone could have twenty five thousand. So it's not that they all have it equal because they they use the funds for different things throughout the different fiscal years. But there's been a carryover and and the fund's been built. So but that's up to them, that's up to them.
Constantino, is he on there?
He is on.
I am. Yeah, I'm on.
What's the size of the carryover?
It's three
So the state fire funds is about three hundred thousand per year?
No, no, no. No, they get about, they get about eighty, it's been right around eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year. I think this year they got ninety thousand dollars and it's just been rolling year after year. So what they don't use, that balance continues to roll. And the next year, they get, you know, another ninety thousand and then it's dispersed and so on and so forth. So it, it's not like they're getting, you know, ninety thousand one year and they're spending, every company's spending all the funds that year.
Chief Constantino, Jim, anything to add?
Now, the only thing, like I said, that Mr. Mr. Abau had expressed the the right information that we do have the funds and we do use them to buy equipment, training and what have you, that's not covered in our normal budgets. And though I'm not totally opposed to this idea, but there's some concerns I do have that I like to address, not right now, but in the future, I still, we still have to get a definitive answer from the other fire chiefs, but this is a tough year for us, at least here, that our budget was cut about twenty percent. So I'm gonna have to use, I have the least of the state funds of all four companies. So I'm gonna have be using to offset our our budget shortfall. But again, I'm not totally opposed to this idea.
I'd just like to add that as part of the discussion Monday night, it was very clear from the the chiefs that they already have pre-allocated some of that money, particularly for turnout gear. Several of them have turnout gear bills coming up that that will be used for part of this money. So a lot of that money is already pre-allocated. So it's not clear to me, at least, I don't know what the number is that's still actually available for this.
Excuse me, you said you get ninety thousand dollars a year. That's not each firehouse, that's total for all of them, isn't it?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's split up between the four. It's split, I think it's it's split up equally between the four. Whenever, whenever amount comes to the county, we then send a check to the to the, there's a, you know, a treasurer oversees the state fire funds account. And then, if I remember correctly, that, whatever it is, is split up equally between all companies.
That's correct. Mr. Doll, just to let you know, Chief Alley from Fork Union is on as well, if you want to unmute him, if he has something to say or not.
I'm just trying to, is he, did he call in, you know, or is he on Zoom?
I can't, I don't know.
Trying to get on.
I I I think we have Chief I think he's on. He's on. He's unmuted.
I see him is unmuted, Mr. Doll.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, I I know we we talked about this after the FRA meeting and and my my only concern is 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 like everyone else was saying, we do use this money for equipment and stuff, our our budget we receive yearly from the county. Really, right now, it just covers the apparatus maintenance and whatever bills we still pay. We pretty much wind up breaking about even. So like this year, we're getting ready to buy about ten sets turnout gear. You're looking at twenty five, thirty thousand of it right there. I just spent two thousand dollars in some supply hose, that's coming out of there. And I'm pretty sure we're going to do hose testing this year and most of our fire hose that we use for attack is twenty five to thirty years old. So I'm I'm expecting we're gonna have to replace some of that, so there's not gonna be a lot left over.
Did you say, is this Hold on.
I think he's on.
I think, I think it's him. Chief Bullen?
This is him.
Yes. Did you want to speak to this?
I did, I I just was trying to get logged in and having trouble, so I missed the conversation.
Just talk about the money that the FRA, that would, the each company has left over. And
The ATL funding?
Yes.
Um, I I'm not sure what was said before I got on the meeting. But in our, in our case, I know it was mentioned that we have a a balance of a hundred and five thousand dollars. And that may be what you see on paper, but in reality, the the balance is much less because we've bought a significant amount of equipment for our new engine. And and you, obviously, you haven't seen that yet. But the, one of the, one of the only reasons that we we were able to save so much money on this engine was using that ATL funding for that purpose. We've saved that money as long as I've been the chief. We have been careful to save that money in anticipation of new apparatus and we actually have to justify why we carry it over from year to year. And the other thing we use the the money for, and what a lot of people use the money for before was making interest payments and various things like that. Each company can use that money as long as they're following the state policy as they see fit. In fact, we changed the law last year to allow them to use it for cancer prevention and gym equipment and stuff like that. And then furthermore, that money that goes directly to the fire company, not to the county, and there's a reason for that, and the reason is, is because it doesn't get caught up in the local politics and who, and and we we could use that money for this, we could use that money for this. That that money goes directly to the fire departments and it was designed to be that way. Rather than, you know, things could change from election to election to election and people can change their or the county could change their policy or their mindset on something, but that money is supposed to go directly to the companies so that they can use it for those reasons. But and it was one percent of the insurance fees for homeowners insurance, but now that that number's increased a little bit more as of last month.
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm not arguing with you on on where the money and how it goes. Like I said, and I wasn't, I wasn't, as I said, the money comes to the county and the county disperses it, I don't know what happens in other localities. And, you know, my suggestion was if there was a way to offset, if there was a way to offset the cost of the project to get it completed without the county having to come up and and and, you know, push the whole amount. Because because as, you know, as I said previously, and I don't think you're wrong, Chief Bullen, but the money's been rolling over since I started here as a budget analyst ten years ago. So there's been a large carryover and it's building every year.
But we're, we're, who who's carrying it over? Kent Store is carrying it over, yes. Is that what you're referring to?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying just in general, the money's been carried over from company to company. And every, as I said, every company has a different amount.
Well, the purpose, the purpose of being, we're, we're allowed to to carry over that money as long as we can justify the reason for doing that. For us, it's, we email them and say, we have an apparatus purchase coming up in FY whatever, you you named the year. And that's acceptable. And when you buy, you know, fire hose alone is, on our new engine, is going to be fifteen or better thousand dollars. So a hundred and five thousand dollars in in one afternoon of me purchasing stuff for this engine will quickly be, you know, fifty thousand dollars. But we, I can't speak for other companies, but we didn't come to you for hydraulic tools, we don't come to you for maintenance, we don't come to you for any of that because when things happen, that's our, that's our lifeline, is that, that, that funding. Turnout gear, all sorts of stuff that we, we, I bought two sets of turnout gear for my, for myself from that fund this year alone. Pagers and I, but I, me personally, I like to keep a balance there because if we do lose or something, wrecked a fire truck, anything can happen. That's our fund that we can quickly turn to to replace things in a, in a hurry. And in our, in our case, and in fact, our ATL funding was was used to actually refurbish the brush truck. We use that ATL funding, we use for new hydraulic tools. We use those for those large purchases that you all would consider capital purchases, but you never, you never hear about them.
Alright, so Mr. Bullen had mentioned the use of is that end principle on payments?
No, you, if you remember before the county had the thing that they would fund a certain amount of a debt service payment and then if 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 a company wanted to, if the truck ended up costing more than what the county funded in debt service payments, then the companies would pay a certain portion back to the county every year, kind of as a reimbursement offset what the total amount was. If you remember recently, now, now forget COVID, but prior to this, the county said, moving forward, we're going to start purchasing the trucks completely and we're not going to require the companies to have to pay those reimbursements back to the county. It's a county asset, we should purchase it, we should purchase it for what what is needed and what is kind of the baseline. And 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 I agree, for them to have some of their state fire money to 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 purchase things for that they think is specific to their company, I think it's one hundred percent a great thing to do. Only suggestion I had was maybe every company wanted to put in twenty five thousand dollars to kind of, you know, offset
Or two hundred thousand dollars.
Or two hundred, or whatever it is.
Currently, we've allocated four hundred thousand, we've got four hundred thousand.
We, we have earmarked, like I said, nothing has been formally committed in 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 the system. It's always been talked about that four hundred thousand is kind of the
So it's not even, it's not even set aside for the funds?
No.
So this would be CIP, might be basically
It's, it's, it's in fund balance, just, just sitting
Oh, so is it, it's just in fund balance?
It just Yes, it was, it was always earmarked, but nothing has been formally committed.
Right.
And so, so we were, so we're at the point now where we've done this twice, the bids have come back to close to a million bucks. And what, what, what do we, what do, what does the board want to do? Because if we stop now, we have to reimburse the Department of Fire programs for the forty some thousand that we paid for some engineering stuff. Or if we proceed, we have to figure out how we are splitting the gap between four hundred and eighty thousand and close to a million dollars. So we were, I was reaching out to the chiefs and we met with some of the, some of the burn building committee to just bring suggestions for it and and figure out a way to, is there a way to 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 kind of fill in the gap?
Right here, you were talking about redoing this for the bids on proposal.
Yes, I mean, again, if, like I said, we're not expecting, there are some specifications and there is some confusion when the bid went out and the engineers and the contractors. So no matter what we do, if we move forward, we have to put this out for bid. But if the boards, if the board says, well, you know, we're not coming up with five hundred thousand or four hundred and fifty thousand, well, then, then, then we're wasting our time to to go out and and do the work to put it out again. But if the board says, look, we want to, we want to cover the whole thing, well, then we'll, we'll move forward and we'll, we'll put it, put it back out to bid again.
I think the the unsaid thing right now is that there's some ambivalence on some of the board members' parts on, on, you know, this spending. And of course, we're all very concerned about, you know, the fund balance in general. And, you know, that's, that's kind of where there's this pause in the room as to what do we do next? And I think the county minister is just looking for some direction. And maybe the board's looking for some, you know, enthusiasm as well too, saying, how, how do we, how do we achieve this gap?
Well, I mean
Other than we just pony up the two hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, I mean, the only other thing, I mean, like I said, you know, CIP's been submitted for the next budget cycle, we have, how much in the CIP?
Nine million.
Nine million in in the fiscal year twenty twenty two CIP for the board to consider. Now, obviously, that's every department's full request and we've never funded every full request. But again, you know, we didn't do any CIP this past year. And so this is just one other thing, you know, you've got the sheriff that wants, I don't say wants, the sheriff that 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 is saying he needs some additional patrol vehicles. We've got building maintenance, things that we have to do.
No, we realize without at least using debt to fund some CIP projects, we're woefully behind.
And and we did fund some engines this year too. And, you know, so there's, we, we basically stripped everything out of the budget, so you know, what's, what is the order of importance here? And so is 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 the importance to fund a burn building or is it to pay for the buildings and 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 maintain the buildings we already have or the vehicles that we have? Like I said, I think the burn building's important, but we have to prioritize and 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 if there's a gap, how we fill in that gap? And that's where we were looking to the Fire Rescue Association and the chiefs to say, hey, you have, you have funds there, is there a way to contribute some of it?
I guess I would throw it out there is where the county looked to take on some debt for, you know, perhaps some fire rescue items, would they consider using, would they come up with a figure that says, yes, we can use these state funds for funding this amount of interest over number of years, that might be a creative way of filling that gap.
You said using the state mer- to fire the, to fund the interest?
Which is what they've done in the past. They don't have to wipe out their funds, but they can budget in, you know, perhaps interest payments that, you know, in essence, allow that that gap build over a period of time. I don't know if there's been any kind of, I haven't looked at how that's been budgeted before, but it sounds like that's kind of what's happened. And so if they're getting eighty thousand dollars, I mean, eighty thousand dollars
This, this past year was ninety.
Ninety thousand, so if they're getting that, if they know that each, each particular station needs to set aside, say, ten or fifteen thousand a year for the next five or six years.
That's the majority of that money.
Then that can help cover that gap.
They're getting twenty two thousand.
I, I throw a number.
That's what I'm saying, but I think it's going to end up being that type of a number that they would have to fill in. I mean, so from here forward, again, they've got, they have an amount sitting there, it's been, it's been slowly building up.
I'm talking about that.
And 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 so, again, the ninety thousand is not going to like drastically go up, you know, crazy, you know, maybe next year it's ninety two thousand. I mean, yeah, it's, it, it goes up incrementally. I mean, so, you know, from just a staff standpoint, we've, we've been working on this building for quite some time. And and we have, we went out to bid twice and we had not come back with drastically different results in time. It's been close to the same. And
Mr. Sheridan, ask speak?
Yes, sir, is that Chief Bullen?
It is. My, again, if if the county is willing to take on the purchase of, from, this is from my perspective, from Kent Store, if you're willing to take on the purchase of the fire hose, the nozzles, nozzles are a thousand dollars apiece, the fire hose is, you know, three hundred dollars every fifty foot section. You want to take on the the maintenance, we, I heard someone say twenty thousand dollars. It's thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars a year to maintain our apparatus without any, any, you know, failures or or breakdowns. If if they want to buy all the, all the large items, all the the loose equipment of, you know, if 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 they want to take that on, then be my guest. I I don't know who you're going to hire to do it, because that's what we use that money for. And and again, I keep hearing that money keeps growing and growing and growing. But what you're not hearing, we spent forty seven thousand dollars in hydraulic tools. We literally plan for those things in long range planning, something everybody else has failed to do. And I mentioned it in the study, there is no long range planning, so we have to do it on our own. And that's what we've done. And that's what we've done. So by, by saying they have a hundred and five thousand dollars, well, that's long-range planning for this new engine, followed by a tanker, fa- followed by other projects. Those are things we've done on our own. So twenty-five thousand dollars may not seem like a lot out of that, that, that hundred and five thousand dollars. But really, it's the, okay, oh, we're, we're, we're going to come up with that money for the, the, you know, the other things that we planned on. Um, the, 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 like I said, we have a tanker in two years supposedly. We have all these other items that we have to fund. We have new AEDs, all these things we've planned on, honestly, honestly, taking into consideration that we may not get new AEDs or something like that through, through the CIP plan. So I just want you to know that, that there's a lot more than just writing a check for twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you, Chief Bullen. Um. Any other?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say something. I think maybe we just can't afford this right now. Let the firemen keep the money that they get specifically for their, their needs. And we can look at this at another time.
I second that.
I, most, I, I agree. I agree that that, um, they need to keep that money that they have. And we need to, if we're going to go out for another bid, um, then maybe we need to do that because this one, the, the second one had some faults with, had something that wasn't right. So, um, maybe we do need to go ahead and get the other bids and then decide whether we're going to quit or whether we can afford it. But I don't think we need to take the fire department's money.
Well, Mr. Dolls.
Ask them to contribute.
Ms. Booker, Mr. Dolls more or less indicated, expect that the bid's going to change that number significantly. So it really boils down to, is the board willing to spend another two hundred thousand dollars on top of four hundred thousand dollars that, you know, is not specifically allocated right now? So a total of six hundred thousand dollars from our gen- general fund that's unallocated for a burn building? When there's a whole other list of CIP priorities that are not being addressed at this point in time? And we're not really talking about how we're going to address those. So, you know, I think what the staff is looking for is, yeah, we can go out for a bid, but that's just a waste of time if we can't get consensus on what we're going to do. You know, board members already say that they think we should put a stop to this. Um, and as I said, there's some ambivalence. So I, I, I'm not, I'm just stating it the way it is, you know?
Well, what, what's your stance?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm ambivalent about it. I mean, I just, I mean, I, I feel like, I think as, as important as it is for the fire department to have um, an ability to train and to use the resources, there are a lot of other needs and wants. And I have been talking for quite some time about the, the limitations of our general fund balance as it stands right now. So I definitely view this as kind of a, really would be nice to have, but, but I'm still concerned about the status of our fund balance as it stands today. Ms. Booker?
Um, yeah, well, I, what Tony just said, I mean, I understand all that. Uh, we don't have to go out for another bid, but it doesn't seem like we have a good bid. We've got a bid and say something was wrong with it. But if we want to scratch that and just forget about it, let's make a decision. I mean, let's decide what we're going to do.
I think I've already heard.
Yeah, that's just not, that's considerate. It can always come back on the table later on. It's not something that's, can die forever.
Grant, I don't think she cares for that.
Well, the grant, um, is Debbie on?
And I think, yeah.
There is a deadline on the grant. If it's not used within a certain amount of time, it, it has to be, it goes away and the money that has been spent has to be reimbursed. And quite honestly, losing a grant, it's unlikely to get another shot at it. If we reapply in the future, it'll probably be turned down.
I don't.
Oh, no, that's not good.
I don't necess- I mean, yes, it is possible that we could get current, turned down, but it's possible we could get it again. But again, we have spent forty, fifty thousand dollars so far to get it to where it is. So the county's going to be on, the county's going to have to reimburse that, that piece for sure.
I understand that.
I, like I said, we can, we can put it out again. I am just not anticipating the bid's changing drastically.
I, I would suggest that we do this, which is, let's come back to this next week or that, and next period, but also kind of have an opportunity to review the fund balance and CIP requests that are coming in. So the board members can make an educated decision with all those facts present to them. Um, rather than, okay, you know, here we are, should we do this bid or not do this bid at this point in time? I'm not, no, I'm just an ambivalent person about this.
And another, and another thing to look at is, Ms. Lindher talked about it earlier, how far we behind in collection rate.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the one thing, you know, we're, we're still working on.
We're going to need fund balance possibly to get three parts of that.
Yes, and it, and the way we always end up with fund balance is we exceed our revenue.
Yes, ma'am.
And we come in under with expenses. There's not going to be a lot of exceeding revenue. Right now, today, the revenue that's coming in is not as high as it normally is. We aren't going to know what the tax revenue looks like until after collections on December 5th. And if we extend the late date, we probably aren't going to know that until January.
Yeah.
Uh, we aren't going to have a real fund balance figure until the audit's complete. I mean, a real legitimate hardcore fund balance figure until the audit's completed at the end of November. If, based on what I see, we aren't going to be putting money back into fund balance like we have been over the last several years. So I think we need to be kind of cognizant of where we're at with our fund balance.
I, I, I do understand that. And I think the only way you get to fund some of these CIP projects is through debt. I mean, you know, just quite frankly, that's, that's the way we're going to have to do that. So either we're going to do it that way or we're not going to do it or we're going to, we're not going to proceed on CIP projects. And certainly this would be a CIP.
Well, no, I mean, you know, finance and, and myself, we, we, we got together a couple of days ago and after all the CIP projects came in, we were trying to look at, and this is getting a little off topic, but how are we going to start funding some of this stuff? And, you know, we have some little small pieces of debt falling off in twenty-three or twenty-two.
We have, we have two hundred and forty thousand falling off in twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, one hundred and seventy falling off in twenty-three and then one million.
One point two million out in twenty-four.
Right.
So we have a potential in a couple of years.
But, but again, the schools, the schools are requesting, you know, one of the Carers Brook Elementary School is requesting uh, an HVAC upgrade because it's sadly.
One point five million.
One point five million dollars. The Abrams building's another one point five million dollars. We've got apparatus, we have.
Apparatus request for two and a half million this year for fire.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, we, we all understand this.
Yeah, so it's, it's problematic. And, and honestly, our debt load is way exceeding what it should be, um, percentage-wise. And I had to explain that when we applied for this last year of financing. So while debt, right now money's cheap and it's, it's, it sounds like a fabulous idea, we're going to have to really look hard at that because at some point, our debt load is going to affect our monitoring.
Well, it, it, it sounds like we may want to do some, you know, forward-thinking analysis in terms of, what is that, is, how does that debt load look? Because I assume you're talking about debt payments in relationship to our, 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 our budget.
Right.
Not necessarily, you know, the level of the debt. But how's that going, how's that going to change given the drops that we're anticipating in the next three years?
Well, sure, and that's what we've looked at. And again, you know, you, it, it's a decision for the board to make. As debt falls off, do you want to create debt to replace that? And stay above your debt threshold? That's a board decision. Um, there are pluses and minuses there.
Well, I mean, quite frankly, we, we, and then not that I'm advocating for this, we've been, we've been past our debt load since high school. And we've been after.
To be there until high school goes away.
Well.
Till the debt goes.
Maybe not necessarily that, but again, we've been, we've been higher than our debt load. And, and it hasn't necessarily been a problem up to this point because we've always had really good reserves coming back in at the end of the year. So, you know, as, as S and P and others have said, you know, you have a high debt load, but you have a good fund ba- you know, a good general fund balance reserve. Well, you know, with what happened, you know, see how this year ends up and what this next year looks like, you know, at some point, well, there's going to be a tipping point. And, and, and I agree, I mean, it would be fantastic to be able to utilize some of the low interest debt to get done what we need. But again, we have to, we have to prioritize what things are requirements and what things are, 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 are nice to use.
It's either that or raise the tax rate, right? So.
Correct.
Because as you just said, we're not going to have extra money coming in and we have, you know, nine million unfunded. And I think we have twenty-two million unfunded in the CIP the following year. So, you know.
Well, and in, in today's meeting that, that we attended, um, one of the leading economists went over the new Moody's report for FY21. And they are anticipating, now, you know, and they could be wrong, but they said in their report, in the Moody's report, that they do not expect local governments to be able to get back to their FY19 levels without raising taxes until FY24. That's something to think about.
Wow. I thi- I think we have to, um, take a look at this whole CIP and, um, review that before we can make this decision.
Were you talking about this decision on the burn building?
Yes, sir.
So how long does it, do we have before the grant expires? I mean, that's, I think the.
She is, Debbie, don't we have to let, and John could probably answer this too. I think we have to let them know by November something, whether or not we're proceeding. We had to let them, I think our expiration ends mid-November and we have to say if we want to re-up it and extend it more or just say, we're, we're, we're done.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
So that makes waiting until CIP kind of, I mean, maybe, you know, unrealistic as far as that goes.
No, I mean, the only thing we can show you, we can, we can show you what is in this year's CIP as, as a little preview to see what's there and, and, you know.
All right.
But.
I think what I'm hearing in a general census is we probably should wait to make this decision, whether to continue to go or not to go. Probably.
You, we, we, you know, we could do the end of October. I mean, if you all want us to.
That's all.
If you all want us to put out one more IFB and, and then if that's.
I, I think you, well. You need the IFB.
Is it going to cost us anything to do another?
We are going to need the IFB by now. If, 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 if we are moving forward with the project in November, we are going to need the, the IFB back.
Before November.
Yes.
A little bit. So, I mean.
It doesn't cost us anything to do that, is that correct?
It's just staff time.
Staff time, but I mean, it's already written and we just have to do a few changes.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably some, maybe a little legal review and staff time, but that's, it's, yeah.
So.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes, sir. If I, if I may.
Yes, Chief.
If, if you decide to extend it, maybe we should address the, uh, the possibility or the option to get a different design on the building, which may bring down the cost substantially. Because I know, uh, the Wayne's, or I mean, I'm sorry, Harrison, this kind of building, that was significantly less than the bids we got, but it's a different type of building, which, uh, fulfills the VDFP grant requirement. So maybe that could be something that the committee, uh, can, can, uh, investigate. And this way it can buy us some time as well and buy you folks some time as well.
And I mean, again, we can do that, but we've, we've, we've gone down this road. We got a high bid, we went back to the drawing board. We had the engineers spend more time and dollars to re-engineer it and, and do a different design and we're here. So, yeah, we can go back to the drawing board and have the engineers redesign it again. But again, we're.
These are pre- by buildings that have been approved by VDFP that really, yeah, we do need an engineer. But these are buildings that have already been approved by VDFP grants. And, uh, like I said, Harrisonburg came in at six hundred and forty thousand for their building. So, I mean, it, it could be something we, we could address.
A prefab.
A prefab, exactly.
And perhaps we could get the plans from, um, Harrisonburg.
I know, uh, Mr. Powell is, uh, is, is working on that as well. Because I'm part of the videos.
Part of, part of the problem here is that the plans that we are using, the plans that we're designed from are the plans from the grant. Um, that is the specs that they use. That is the, you know, we designed it directly from the grant holder's plans. The only changes we made from their plans were very minor and wouldn't have increased the cost by a huge amount. Like I said, the only thing that's not required by the grant that's in that design was the asphalt drive. Um, and we can take that out, but it, that's only going to be about eighty thousand if that.
But here's my question, did Wayne's or whoever that had the six hundred and forty thousand dollar building, did they have a grant for that? Or did they just build it on their own so they didn't have to follow the grant specs?
Yeah, that I don't know.
That I can't answer.
I mean, that, that can change things dramatically. I mean, so.
Exactly.
Well.
Yeah, but that means that we have to come up with six hundred and forty thousand. We don't need a grant.
Same thing we'd have to come up with now, or close to it.
It's just six hundred thousand one way or the other.
One way or the other. All right.
I don't know, I would just throw that out as an option.
Appreciate it, Chief. Thanks, sir. Um. I mean, Mr. O'Brien walked out. I would, personally, I'd like to, if we got four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our pocket, doesn't cost us anything, but we'll staff time. And I hate to do that burden to y'all, but if we can do another IFB. Um, Ms. Eager?
That's, yeah, that's my suggestion about five minutes ago, do another one. And we know where we are. And then we can make, make, make the decision.
All right.
Whether we go do it or not.
I think we just.
We, we will, we will do a new IFB.
We're going to go, Ted, do the IFB. All right.
We're going to new, do a new invitation for bid. Once we get the bids back and we make sure everything's 100% straight.
And we can possibly check on Harrisonburg, see if they went by the grants.
We, we will bring it back to the board and we will let you know and then.
Yes, um, this is Cindy again. Just to clarify, if I'm going to put the IFB out again, I do need to go back to fire programs and ask for an extension on the grant since the grant has to be, um, the building has, is supposed to be started by November. So I'll need to go back and ask for an extension. Is that okay with the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Move on to S.
Oh, let's, do you want to talk, when we said the three?
I got you. I wrote it down as a, I wrote it down as a yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So I sent the board, there's been a lot, a lot of back and forth between Mr. and Mrs. Tally and the county. This goes back to almost 10 months ago when they requested a, a reduced fee for hooking up water to their property. And, and we told them that, we had a discussion with the board. I sent letters saying, the county's not going to do that. I, I'm in no authority to do that. And let me know what you want to do. Do you want us to send you your check back? And I feel kind of weird that we're having to talk about this here because it seems like it's pretty cut and dry. And we said we're not doing anything, but, and then I, the last email, I tried to contact them, but because something's obviously missing in, in, in interpretation and what we're sending. So. Now, I.
We said we're not going to do it.
Yes, and, and so, so, so my next thing to the tallies is going to be, I'm going to send them a letter saying the board is not making any accommodations for any fee adjustments. We, here is your check, we are submitting your check back to you for, for, for the water connection fee that you wanted to do. If you want to do, if you want to revisit it, we can go through the process again. That's.
Ms. Booker?
Um, um, Eric, put it, that last statement needs to be a little bit on point. It's either you don't want to hook up and we give you your forty-five thousand, or you go ahead and apply because you do want to hook up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought we, I thought we said that in, in multiple letters, but I can.
Now.
Terrifies it very well. All right.
All right, that's, we.
Yeah.
Chief, and I'm guessing this is property over fourteen.
Oh, yeah. And this one's short. We are, you know, probably, we're in the posture of, of filing for our court approvals on this. We anticipate filing within the next couple of days.
Wells property.
Sorry?
The property fourteen.
Yes, the one. Yes, the Wells property, this is the Wells property, yeah, the two parcels on the back.
Okay, cool, great. All right, last, Q, local allocations for federal cares coronavirus relief funds.
We'll make this, let's see, let's see how quickly we can do it. So again, this is where we just discussed with the board, different uses of funds. Um, the sheriff's office has a vehicle proposal. So currently, any, if they have to transport any, uh, anyone, uh, to any of the regional jails or anything like that, they basically have their squad cars. And you cannot transport more than one person appropriately in a squad car alone. Um, there's been multiple localities that have been, one, purchasing more vans or purchasing a van to be able to shuttle folks when they have to go from, from the sheriff's office to a, a, a regional jail. So this is a proposal to purchase, um, a, a van, uh, a transport van with, with the necessary equipment. And in the back, what it does, there's a, there's kind of a giant insert in, in a retrofit that breaks it up into three separate compartments with, with AC. You have a seat here is one compartment, you have a seat here, which is one compartment, and then you have a seating area here, which is another compartment. And I think we either have Sheriff, yeah, yeah, Major Wells is on the line and he can talk more specifically to this request.
Major?
Sheriff, can you hear him?
Yes, sir.
Yes, essentially, I'm only asking for this, I hate to ask for money after that last conversation, but this is strictly for use of CARES Act funding. Um, essentially, right now, if we were to have to arrest or transport, we'll call it a mass arrest. Mass arrest for us would be more than one person at a time. You would have to use a separate deputy car for each arrestee. So if we had to arrest three people at any one scene, that would take three deputies off the road just to transport them, go to the office, and then another three to transport them to forty-five minutes to Orange County Jail. And if we can use CARES Act funds for this, other than regular budget funds, it's, it would be a nice-to-have item, but definitely not a mission-critical from standard budget funds item, given the COVID, uh, distancing restrictions required. The insert in that van would be very beneficial. Plus, you can see by the distance on one seat, it actually sets people six feet apart on one seat. And this would be a, probably a fifteen-year vehicle as far as usage.
That was gonna be my comment, is this is more CARES-related because it allows you to safely transport multiple people.
This is all CARES. So just, just, it's total is about sixty-five thousand, so if we get head nods, we'll move forward and we'll bring something forward.
I got, we got two head nods over here, I believe, correct, Mr. O'Brien? Uh, Ms. Booker, Ms. Eager, how do y'all feel?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, next one is, um, let me move, let me move some pictures here. So again, this is another sheriff's office proposal, but kinda goes back to its CARES funding again. Right now, all the sheriff's vehicles have, uh, vinyl and upholstery, not maybe not upholstered, but, but porous seats in, in the back of each squad car. Um, what they have, they have these one-piece molded plastic inserts that you can put in there. And in addition, it's a different seatbelt configuration. Normally, the buckle would be inside, so the sheriff's deputy would have to go inside, go into the thing, buckle them in. This puts it on the outside, so they don't have to lean in. So there's, there's a, there's a distancing standpoint, there's a safety standpoint, there's a, there's a porous and a cleaning standpoint with this, because it is just one molded plastic piece. So they're looking at replacing, um, this, uh, this in all the rear seats of their squad cars. Uh, Major Wells, you wanna chime in on this one?
Yes, sir, again, this would be for CARES Act funding due to coronavirus. You know, our current backseat, your standard factory vinyl-covered foam backseat, that are difficult to clean because they're two pieces, you know, having it pinned down between the seat. Plus, even with spraying to measure how well that spray is ready to get into the foam. With a seat like this, it's a solid rigid, one plat- one-piece plastic or fiberglass-type rear seat that is just a hard surface, very easy to wipe down. Also contains a plastic floorboard segment that actually has a drain hole in it, so you can actually literally wash the back out if needed. And the seatbelt system basically reversed the anchor points. As, uh, Mr. Dahl said, currently, if we need to buckle somebody in, the deputy has to pretty much put their head within two inches of their mouth, reach over to get the seatbelt buckle buckled in. And you can tell by that picture, this one kinda reverses that, so you can seatbelt them in from standing outside of the vehicle if there's reduced exposure.
Only question I have about that is, can the units be removed? And are we installing them on all of the sheriff's deputies' vehicles? Or can we not be installing them on vehicles? If it can't be removed, that are, say, gonna be, you know, uh, uh, made obsolete in the next two to three years or something like that?
Yes, sir, basically, this is, the old backseat comes out and this one goes in. We've used these in a few vehicles in the past as, uh, funding permits. And what we do, we take out the backseat, we actually save it in our storage shed. So when we go to resell the vehicle later, we just kinda include the standard factory backseat with it. And it's just a one-piece unit that bolts in and out, it's totally boltable in or out.
So, yes, you can reuse them then.
So we can transfer them to next, so.
That's the only question I have.
All right.
So again, this is another CARES Act thing, and again, head nods and.
Ladies, ladies?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Okay, we got three, we got four, all righty.
Um, next one, so, so just a few other things here, and the only other one I think I'm gonna really go over, well, there's a few. So the sheriff's office right now, every deputy has their own vehicle. They're assigned to a deputy. If there is ever a point where a deputy has to go down or say they had to transfer, transport a COVID patient in their vehicle, a COVID patient, a COVID, um, individual in their vehicle, there's timing that goes into, um, disinfecting the vehicle. And if, and if you have a limited number of deputies on the road, it would be beneficial to have a spare vehicle in the fleet to be able to transport and to be able to swap out a vehicle if needed. We're not talking giving every single deputy a spare vehicle, we're talking, we're, we're talking one to maybe two vehicles to swap out. And, and Major Wells, you wanna chime in on this one?
Yes, sir, again, this is CARES Act funding. Our vehicle fleet is, we're good right now, but because we're getting a CIP this year, we usually use those vehicles recycle out for spares, so we're gonna be short on our functional spare. Because we usually reuse radars and other equipment, but when we build a new car, we kinda strip parts of that out and we reuse and buy new parts, and then just age and wear and tear. So my thought was, if we could use CARES funding to purchase and kinda have another spare vehicle sitting there, so should we have contamination issues because we transport somebody and find out they're COVID positive? Um, it'll give us time to kind of set that car aside. And not to be overly graphic, but you gotta remember in our cars, sometimes we're talking about more than just sneezing. It's, we've had people bleed, vomit, defecate in the vehicles, we're at the, down the whole car and have somebody come professionally clean it. So it would be nice, we could have a nice, fully-equipped, functional spare vehicle there, um, using the CARES Act funding.
Oh, now, my, my question would be, if you have two individuals in an altercation and you find out one of them is COVID positive, it's a pretty good bet both of them may end up being. So would two be more like it?
Two's always better than one when it comes to spares, but I didn't wanna appear greedy, sir.
Well, this, Ms. Twisdale, our local expert on, is this something?
I, I believe Ma- Major Wells and I talked quite a bit about this, and I think they have one spare. Didn't you say that you have one spare that's functional?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
So this would give them two.
Okay, well, case three of them gets a fine.
He might be pushing it.
Well, we, we have to order an additional rubber seat.
Yes. So we'll come forward, we'll come forward with these three things and we'll adjust the dollars appropriately.
Okay.
Um, so just a couple of other things, just for your, you know, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at hiring an additional outside contracted cleaning crew to step up some of the cleaning efforts in some of the areas to get, to meet the new Department of Labor standards that, that have to be implemented. We're looking at the cost of that, again, it would be a CARES funding, um, supplement. Uh, we're working on some contractual stuff right now for that, so we're gonna bring that forward. I know one thing we always kind of just talked about is expenses for food. You know, we've got a lot of community organizations that, that have done good, um, to provide food for, for populations in need. So as we start moving forward in the next month or so, I think we need, probably need to make sure that, you know, I know some organizations have submitted for the grants, but there may be more requirements as time goes on. As they're serving, you know, an elderly population or a population that, that does have food needs because of, you know, being out of work or, or whatever it may be, you know, due to COVID nineteen. So something to put on the board's radar that we wanna bring forward and, and maybe look at. You know, as we talked about organizations like Meals on Wheels or MACA or JOBB or things like that, they're, they're kinda doing some different things and they've had to adjust in what they're doing to provide food to the community. So that's one thing, um, and I'm not gonna really get into the paid day program. We're gonna kind of put that one to rest and, and, and call it a day. We had reached out to the schools about seeing if we could coordinate with the program that they had and, and it went to the school board and, and, and it was not, it was not, uh, we're kind of, we are not moving forward with this, and I don't think I have anything else I really need to talk about on there, I don't. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Does anyone else have any ideas about CARES funding?
Um, I believe that, um, Meals on Wheels has, uh, received a fifteen thousand dollars in MACA as well. I spoke with Brian Rothmel, and, uh, so they would not be able to, um, accept any more than that, that's our limit.
Well, no, I mean, so, so they could, I mean, so, so they submitted for the small business grant, through the small business grant program. Now, it does not mean, and that was through a certain period of time, it does not mean that the county, if they felt there was still a need in the community going on from this point forward. Because remember, some of these grants were a point in time that says up to this point, we've seen a loss in our revenues, you know, whatever they may have been up to, you know, when they applied, maybe round one or round two. You know, this may be able to supplement some organizations for maybe October, November, December.
Okay.
Provide food to the community, that's, that's really what we're talking about.
So this is in addition to, to that program?
Yeah, and it's, and it's not really, it's not really a grant program through the, through the, that we would go through the CIC. We would have to look at it a little bit differently, but just something to think about and, and we're not, like I said, just something that we've, we've been kinda kicking around to see, you know, what, what is the need with the community still as time goes on, right?
Okay.
And anything else.
All right. Thank you very much, all righty. Any other new business?
Um, yes, Mr. Payne, you had talked about, do you want to do the, um, the extension?
Twenty-four days or twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-five days or whatever amount you wanna do for an ordinance extension for the December fifth collections.
I think that's a good idea.
Ladies?
Yes, that's fine.
Ms. Booker?
That's fine.
Okay, go ahead with it.
All right, you want an amendment to the, the ordinance to, to suspend payment of penalties?
Suspend penalties until.
Second half collection until December thirty-first. Yeah, we're basically, what was, the temporary ordinance that we did.
We'll do the same thing.
Same thing what they did in June. Yeah, okay.
Uh, very briefly on our new business, uh, attended Len Gardner's celebration on Monday, I believe it was, and, uh, Mr. Mel Sheridan at that point in time had suggested that maybe the board find a way of recognizing, uh, Mr. Gardner's remarkable achievements, you know, throughout his life. Uh, having served Guadalcanal, Pearl Harbor, and of course, serving both on the board and then really being an, an active member of the lake for some forty-plus years, so. Um, and if you were at that celebration of life, you, a lot of other very nice and wonderful things about Mr. Gardner. So, uh, I believe he's welled the lot and deserves recognition by this county. So maybe we can find something beyond just the, you know, sort of normal process there.
I'm with you on that.
I'm saying.
Maybe a plaque of some sort.
Yes. Hey, hey, I hate to say this this way, and I just, this just went in my mind, the Len Gardner Memorial Circle.
Sure.
Take one of the roundabouts.
Also, Kelly just reminded me, Kelly, say it again?
Um, Delegate Ware will be introducing a memorial resolution anywhere when they go back into session.
Excellent, excellent, yeah, so that's fine.
And we had, we had reached out to, to the governor's office to see if anything that they would, some type of, 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 of letter or resolution as well to see if, if something like that, so we'll have to follow back up on that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And, and maybe, maybe, maybe we have, maybe we have a building, uh, that, that needs to name.
We're gonna run out of buildings.
And maybe we could change, and maybe, and maybe in the future, we change the name of the Civil War Park to a Memorial Park, and we could put a, something there for, uh, Mr. Gardner.
We could add something there for Dakota, so I think we could add something there to him, no matter what we did.
Right, right.
Um, all righty. So I will now open the second round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board, please keep, state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct us to the board. Does anyone wish to address the board at this time? Ms. Harris?
The only extra folks we have on there are the fire chiefs. I'm, I'm gonna see if they have anything additional to say, but they're the only other people on there.
Uh, I think they all got their chance to speak.
Well, it's still deserved public comment.
Well, I mean, if, we can ask, Chiefs, does anybody would like to speak in public comment?
What, what was the question, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
This is, did you wanna speak in the second round of public comment? And I'm gonna take that one as a no, maybe?
Um, I have some comments that I'll address with Mr. Dahl when I meet with him tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Dahl.
No comments for me, other than I make a motion to adjourn.
Not so lucky, we'll be here a while longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Was Chief Bullis still there?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't think he would be. All right, hearing done, Mr. Dahl will now close, second round of public comment, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I'm with the Flannan County Board Supervisor, entering a closed amendment pursuant to the bridge of, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A five, respective industry, section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A six, A six, investment of funds of the code for Jan nineteen fifty as amended for the purpose of discussing respective industry and investment funds.
Do I have a second? Ms. Eager?
Second, I mean, I.
Ms. Booker? Ms. Booker?
Hi.
Ms. Weaver?
Y'all are making too much noise, you can't hear me, hi.
I heard you, ma'am, and Chair Bo Tye were.